Can I ask everybody to please rise so we can salute the flag?
Let me just... Let me just salute the flag of the United States of America and the two republics which stands one nation under God, individual for liberty and justice for all.
I'll ask the clerk to call the attendance.
Counselor Brown, he's here. Counselor Judith Garcia.
Present.
Counselor Tenere Garcia, absent. Counselor Lopez.
Here.
Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Counselor Recubero, he's here somewhere. Counselor Vido.
Present.
Counselor DeJesus.
Present.
Counselor Hattlerberg.
Here.
Counselor Vega.
Here.
And Counselor Taylor.
Here.
Ten members present, one absent, you have a quorum.
Okay.
Dear Honorable Counsel, please be advised that City Council President Robinson has called a special meeting of the City Council for Saturday, September 30th at 10:00 a.m. in the City Council chambers for the following purposes: Salute the flag, calling the role of members, interview with the following finalists for city manager: Michael McGovern, Fidel Maltese, Cheryl Watson Fisher, and James Duggan, in public speaking.
Counselor Hattlerberg moves to accept the follow of the order under suspension. Seeing no objection, so moves. Just a couple of quick updates. We will be staying to our schedule. We've got a lot on the plate today and we want to keep it moving along. We're going to bring in the candidate. Now, I'm not going to announce the counselors. When it's your turn to ask a question, you will introduce yourself to the candidate. If anyone has any questions before we bring in the candidates, seeing none, we'll ask Jessica to bring the first candidate, which is McGovern.
Mr. President, is somebody keeping time?
The clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
The clerk will keep time and when a person has 30 seconds left, he'll notify me and I'll notify the candidate.
Okay.
Let me step off. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. President, and to the rest of the members.
We're going to get started here. We've got a long day here. The first question will be, before we get to the first question, we'll actually give us a brief opening remarks for three minutes.
I'm sorry, we're doing an opening remark, counselors.
Yes.
You know, I apologize, sometimes I have a little tough time hearing, so I may ask for a repeat. So, sure, opening remark, I wasn't expecting that, but that's not a problem whatsoever. Just briefly, I know you have a lot to get through today. My name is Mike McGovern, born and raised in the city of Lowell. I began my career back in 1993, I think it was, with the City Council in Boston. Went to work for a state representative out of Lowell, worked there for a number of years, and then worked at Great Lowell Tech for about 11 years as the, essentially, the chief of staff, the director of the school foundation. And on to there, I went as the assistant city manager in Lowell. I was there for about four years, and for the past five years, I've been the town administrator in Shirley, Massachusetts. Thank you.
Okay. First question goes to my colleague.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. McGovern, for being here. My name is Amali Vido. I'm a city counselor at large here in Chelsea. My question is, can you please describe how you view the distinction between your day-to-day operational responsibilities and policies with respect to your relationship with the city council?
Two minutes, excuse me, two-minute response on all questions.
So, hopefully I can fit it in two minutes. You know, I read your charter, I understand Plan E form of government, it's very clear in the roles of the city council and very clear in the roles of a city manager. The body here as the counselors, your legislative, your policy ordinances, loan orders, the city manager is essentially your day-to-day operations as well as your finance, but I'm not sure it's as clear and simple as that. I understand Plan E form of government. As the assistant city manager in Lowell, a Plan E form of government, I understand that I answer to you and you answer to the residents. You're going to get constituent requests, you're going to have to talk to the city manager, maybe some departments and everything like that. You know, you need to be able to relay information to your constituents, and some may argue that that is kind of meddling into day-to-day operations. When we came to the city of Lowell, the past administration and the council, the relationship, for whatever reason, had run its course, and there were a lot of accusations of meddling into day-to-day operations. Kevin Murphy and I, the city manager, never had that problem with the city council. You want to know why? Because it's about communication. We're all working together and we're working for the same goal.
Thank you, Mr. McGovern.
Good morning. My name is Daniel Lopez, I'm a city councilor, District Four. My question to you is if you can describe what you believe to be the Chelsea's strengths and weaknesses, and how would you help?
So, that's an excellent question, and I think, you know, just since January or so, and really, you know, getting to know Chelsea, you know, your downtown is very vibrant, your public safety operation seems to be running pretty smoothly, your community organizations are extremely active, very similar in Lowell. You know, your economic development and your growth, I mean, it is booming, right? But like Lowell and probably most gateway cities, I really think your biggest strength is, are your people here, your residents, right? They are the backbone of your community. And in terms of your challenge, I'll say, not necessarily weakness, I think those two are actually connected, believe it or not, right? Because when I say the growth and development is positive, and it also can be a challenge, is that economic development and growth come with many positive things, but they also come with some issues that you'll have to mitigate, i.e., you know, traffic and you're getting air quality issues. So I think that those are definitely something that you want to make sure that while you're growing and you're moving the city forward, you're not leaving the people who are the backbone of your community behind, and they're left out in the cold. You know, your schools are always going to face a challenge, Lowell Public Schools, the same thing. I think that in Lowell, one of the biggest challenges we faced was kind of the greening of the city. We worked quite a bit with Mill City Grows, which was a garden program.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you.
Thirty seconds.
Oh, I'm sorry, 30 seconds. I'm sorry, sorry about that. So, yes, once again, it's really about taking a look at those challenges and making them into opportunities.
Counselor Recubero, can you lower your mic?
Good morning. My name is Joanna Recubero, I'm the counselor for District Six. My question is a simple one. Please describe and give an example how you engage directly with residents throughout the city and how you would treat them.
So, for me, it's pretty simple, it's respect, that's all it is, right? Wherever I've been, I'm really just a placeholder, because there are people that are going to be here, probably most of you, if I'm fortunate enough to get this junk, long after I'm gone, however long I'm here, okay? So, it's all about respect. In Lowell, we had communication with our neighborhood groups and our community active groups on a constant basis. In the town of Shirley, when I got there, it was very, very fractured, there was a recall of the select board, you know, there was not a lot of trust, and we had to work hard to really regain that trust to the community and the staff and the select board. And that really had to do with, I know it's a cliche, but an open-door policy. I tell residents all the time, you want to come up and look at your budget? Absolutely, I'll sit with you and go over. What I tell you is not made up. I don't lie, I'm upfront and honest. It's their money, come on in, I'll show it to you. And so it really comes down to just as much communication as possible, I think is the best way to go, that transparency piece. Once again, we had a division of neighborhood services, and our neighborhood groups were extremely active, and so we would work with the community groups often and go out to meetings and listen to what their concerns are.
Counselor Hattlerberg.
My name is Brian Hattlerberg, I'm one of the counselors at large. Could you describe to us how you set the priorities for your administration, just the process you would follow?
So, I look at it this way, there's four partners in this relationship, there's you, there's the staff, there's the community, and then there's me. And I look at my position as the fourth, right? I'm on the rung. If I'm doing everything that is making sure that the council is operating smoothly, that the staff is operating smoothly, and the community is operating smoothly, then I'm doing my job. So in terms with the council, we had a lot of communication with the city council. We were all in agreement that there were the four pillars that we focused on: public safety, education, economic development, and quality of life issues. Now, obviously, there are subsets of all of those, but we were in constant communication, whether it was through text messages, phone calls, face-to-face meetings, and understanding what your priorities and what our priorities are. In terms of staff, what we would do is, through the budget process, we would meet with them individually, department heads, go over their goals for the years, their accomplishments for the year, find out what they need, and we had a monthly department head meeting where we were in contact with them, and then there was the daily interaction on developing those plans. And in terms of the community, we had Department of Planning and Development Neighborhood Service as well with the city manager's office. We were once again in constant communication with the neighborhood groups and the community groups, and what we would do is we would put all of that together.
Thirty seconds.
And we implemented an annual State of the City address in Lowell, and we went over all of those, not only just the accomplishments and the goals as well for the upcoming year.
Next question. Todd Taylor.
I'm District One, City Councilor Todd Taylor from Prattville. Thank you for coming. How do you plan to walk the fine line in a community that has divergent and competing interests, listening to the different sides, but at the same time being able to make hard decisions that need to be made, all while trying to bring these sides together?
So, ultimately, the decision that you make is really what is best for the organization and the community, and that's really always what you want to be doing. But I will tell you, as the point person for the $375 million high school project, this question probably is, no pun intended, tailor-made for me. We went through a very controversial and a tough process in the city of Lowell. There was a sighting issue of where the new high school was going to be, whether it was going to be out at Colley Stadium or remain in the downtown location, and this was about a two-year process. They originally picked the site of Colley, there was an election that happened, new councils came in, and then we had to shift. We were caught in the middle of what somebody had told us it was just a political football game. We never took it personally, our goal was to provide as much information as possible, stay neutral, and not pick sides, and that's really all we did throughout that entire process, and we stayed focused on that. Now, my blood pressure at one point was 180 over 165, but, you know, it was not our decision, it was not our role at that point to interject ourselves into this discussion that really the council and the community was going to make. Our goal was to present all the facts and as much information as possible, and then tell us where you want us to build it, and we'll build it.
Okay, next.
What experience have you had with a diverse community with residents of different backgrounds than your own, and how would you approach communications with residents?
I'm sorry, what was the last background, so?
And how would you...
Point.
And how would you approach communications with residents?
So, I grew up, you know, worked in Lowell, lived in Lowell for basically my entire life. I'm very comfortable in that setting. Lowell is a very, very diverse community. I think there's something like 47 languages spoken at Lowell High School. You know, we have the second largest Cambodian community in the country, very large Latin and Hispanic community, very large Indian community, and over the last 15 years, a big, growing African community in the city. It's something that I'm very, very comfortable with, but it's about being out in the community, going to meetings, getting to know the leaders in those communities, and once again, it's about respect. And even more so in these situations, it truly is listening and learning. You know, you need to understand what the needs are and how things play out differently in other communities. In the city of Lowell, we used to post all of our job postings with the community organizations, the Cambodian Mutual Assistance Association, Coalition for Abetaka, and our goal was always to try and recruit staff from those organizations. And we had almost, we had liaisons within the city that we worked with and interacted with in those communities, so it is something that I'm very comfortable with and I'm very familiar with.
If I can ask my colleagues, pull your mics down so you can talk to the mic and make it very clear when you ask your questions. Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Calvin Brown, District Eight, City Council. My question is, can you tell us your approach in hiring and evaluating candidates that you would consider for your staff, your management staff?
Yes. So I look at it in two different ways. One, obviously, you want to try and get the most qualified staff members possible, right? That's always the ultimate goal. You know, but for me, it's also about the fit. I want to make sure that who we're hiring is going to work well within the organization and work well with the other staff that they have to interact with. That's extremely important to me. To be perfectly honest with you, I would rather take a person who may not be as qualified, but I feel like they're actually going to be a better fit. We'll work with you, we'll train you, we'll give you those tools to succeed, that's not a problem. But, you know, life enough is tough as it is out there, right? I don't want people coming to work feeling miserable every day. We try and create a positive environment. In Lowell, we always use hiring committees, and a lot of times, if we were hiring for, say, a finance position, you know, we would have people from other departments in there, a recreation staff member, a director from health or something like that, and I wanted to be able to get their opinions of, not necessarily are they competent in finances, but what their read was on that person, and how they thought they were going to interact with the rest of the organization. You know, we've really rebuilt our organization. I stress to the staff, both in Lowell and Shirley, that we're in the customer service business. I expect you to be respectful of the residents coming in, but I also expect that the residents will treat our staff the same way. I won't tolerate anybody being berated. But yeah, it's really about making sure that that fit is correct within the organization.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Counselor DeJesus, District Three. I want to also acknowledge everyone that's in the room, thank you to all the residents that are here today. It's going to be a long meeting, and I appreciate you guys being present. My question is, sorry.
McGovern.
McGovern, I'm sorry.
Let's try to stay to the time.
My apologies.
I've been called worse, though.
So my question is, describe your approach to the supervision of department heads, staff, and ensuring accountability and collaboration to ensure community needs are being met.
So, you know, I'm not a micromanager. Once again, I'm there to give the staff the tools to succeed, I want them to take risks. I'm not a town treasurer, a city treasurer, a DPW director. I have, from my experience, a lot of working knowledge on how those things happen. So, in terms of reviewing and looking at staff and their functions, once again, it's about communication. In Shirley, what we do is, we actually do a self-evaluation every year, and that's a little different, right? It's not the classic, the department head is sitting there in front of the staff. The evaluation really isn't our goal to actually help the staff improve and become better. And, you know, I didn't want staff to feel that this was this punitive process, that it was an open communication that the staff could have with their department head, and the same with me and the department heads in Shirley, hoping to get people to understand how we can both work together to improve performance. It definitely is not a punitive measure that I look at in terms of evaluations.
Thank you.
Tenere Garcia, District Seven, City Council. Like many cities, Chelsea's facing an urban crisis, particularly housing. What would be your plan to address the housing crisis in Chelsea?
I mean, this is a tough question, right?
No.
Not one individual's going to solve this problem, this is a national problem. I think the biggest thing is that we have everybody at the table together. I think it's our federal partners, our state partners, our local partners, I think that we need to have our community organizations at the table with us as well. I think we need to have our business leaders at the table. You know, we want to be able to take a look at, are we using every tool that we can, right? MBTA communities, we're looking at somewhere around 3,600 in Chelsea that you're going to have to create once the overlay district is created, but I know that that's all set. But, you know, you want to be making sure that inclusionary zoning, you want to be using, you know, 40R tools, the 43D, which will expedite permitting 180 days from when it's submitted to when it gets approved. I know that the city of Boston just put an executive order in that if anything comes in front of the departments and it's related to housing, then it's fast-tracked, and so I think those are things that you want to be able to look at. And you want to be able to keep an eye on what's going on nationally, too. You know, you may discover that something out in Seattle is happening, and you can replicate it here. There's nothing wrong with, you don't have to reinvent the wheel. And so those are things that you want to take a look at.
Thirty seconds.
One of the things that I worked with Counselor Martin in Lowell was a program called Two for Lowell, and it was trying to get people into homeownership. We use CDBG funds that paid for down payments. It was owner-occupied required, you could live in one side and rent out the other one or two units, but, you know, may make a small dent, but at least it's something to try a little different thought process.
Good morning. Judith Garcia, City Council for District Five, and my question to you is, what economic development opportunities are, would you like to pursue in Chelsea?
Sure, thank you. Economic development, I was very, very involved with in the city of Lowell. All the economic development, even though there was Planning and Development Office, ran through the city manager's office. Here in Chelsea, you know, from what I look at, you know, the East and Ave area is something that I would be interested in, I think West Chelsea would be areas. But, you know, I want to make sure that it's not just focusing on one or two areas. In Lowell, we had many balls in the air when it came to economic development, many, many projects all going on at the same time. I have that ability to multitask. I think one of the first things that you want to make sure you do is, you know, ask, what do you want to be, right? Do you want to be known as a community that is, you know, healthcare, biotech, medical engineering, high-tech, whatever it may be, right? And then now, more than ever, planning is critical, right? And when you talk about economic development over the last 10 years, housing is talked in the same breath, they are connected. You know, you don't want to wake up one day and see a mishmash of buildings and just nothing makes sense. You have three priorities in your budget: creating jobs, new revenue, and that mix of having businesses in with the neighborhoods. And in Lowell, we use TIFs quite a bit to lure businesses in. We used six major TIFs in the city of Lowell, and that brought in about an extra $200 million, $280 million in private investment. It created jobs of 2,500, high-paying jobs.
Thirty seconds.
And we also, it brought in about $15 million over the lifespan of those TIFs. We used Markley, which was the old Prince Spaghetti building, had been vacant for years upon years, plunked down in the middle of a neighborhood. We brought Markley in there, lured them, but we made sure they worked with the community and the neighborhood, that they didn't disrupt the neighborhood, and they made a lot of improvements, infrastructure improvements into that neighborhood.
Thank you. Counsel Robinson, describe your direct experience and level of involvement with municipal finance, human resources, and collective bargaining.
So, in terms of finance, I worked directly with the CFO in Lowell, and I do all of the finances in the town of Shirley, which, let me say, was a challenge when I got there, and it still remains a challenge. But in the city of Lowell, and I do it in Shirley, what we do is we bring department heads in, have that kind of, that talk, that inclusiveness, right? And we, you know, ask them what their needs are, both operationally and capital-wise for the upcoming year, have that discussion. We then have budget hearings, so the community can understand where we're coming from. DPD also works with the community. But like I said, in Shirley, I have faced, I can't tell you the multitude of challenges. However, we're at a point now in my last five budgets, we have not used one-time monies to balance at all, I've tripled basically our stabilization accounts. We're in a far better place than we were five years ago. In terms of HR, in the city of Lowell, I deal with all of the HR in Shirley, and I'm not talking just personnel matters, I deal with all the collective bargaining units in the town of Shirley, I do the direct bargaining. In Lowell, I was part of the team that did that with HR. In terms of the personnel stuff, I dealt directly with the HR director. All issues that were union-related or personnel matters came to me and the HR first.
Thirty seconds.
We tried to solve that. You know, once again, nobody wants to fire anybody. We were a big believer, same in Shirley, we want to give you a second chance, we're willing to work with you. Now, at the end of the day, if things can't work out, then once again, you have to do what's best for the organization.
Thank you. Counselor.
Round two, you're doing amazing. My question is, can you describe your authentic self? At the end of the day, you get home, you take off your tie, who is Mike McGovern?
Mike McGovern. So I, I'm pretty basic, I wear a white... I wear a white shirt every day. I have mahogany wingtips on today because I have a blue suit. I eat the same thing for breakfast and lunch every day for the last probably thirty years. I do play hockey, so I get all of that out on the ice in the morning. But I'm pretty basic. When I'm not in my suit, I'm in basically jeans or shorts. I don't, I, let me address it this way, that I would like to talk about what I think staff would want to say about me. As confident as some people may claim I am, I'm very, very humble, and I don't like talking about myself. And I think that, I would hope that staff would say about me is that I'm open, and it goes for my personal life as well, that I'm open and honest. You know, I think that I'm approachable. I think that people understand that I value, value, value acknowledging when staff does a great job. I think it's extremely important that you groom from within the organization and give people a chance. It's good for staff to see that if they work hard, there's opportunities. And it's also great for the organization because they can basically have seamless transition, okay? I'm not a micromanager. I know what my limitations are. I'm there for support and to give those tools, but yet I'm not afraid to roll my sleeves up and have to get dirty and work side by side. I'm a big, big teamwork person.
Thirty seconds.
I think that comes from hockey. I'm a crisis management. I'm calm under pressure. But last, but definitely not least, it's respect. You know, I have a story about cut blades with the city of Lowell. There was a staff member during a big snowstorm. Sorry, I'll try and be quick here, Counselor. You know, we go up and we're looking in DPW, and there's a sixty-five-year-old worker who's on his back in a puddle trying to change a cut blade. And the guy's worked for the city for like forty years. And I'm like, I talked to the assistant director, and I'm like, right, what's he doing? Well, you know, we change those out sometimes two or three a storm. And I said, well, is there anything different? Well, there were these cut blades that would really last a year. There's still some in use now, twenty-two thousand dollars. I went back to the CFO and said, find the money for it now. He deserves that. Sorry about that, Counselor. I'm just the president.
Thank you, Mike McGovern.
Thank you. My question to you is, how do you plan to respond and support the immigration crisis that is impacting Chelsea? And how will you help the new Americans coming in?
I'm sorry, Counselor, can you repeat that?
Yes.
I apologize.
How would, how do you plan to respond and support the immigration crisis that is impacting Chelsea? And how will you help the new Americans coming in?
You know, once again, you know, growing up in Lowell and seeing the diversity in the city, it doesn't faze me in the least, you know? The one thing I will say that this is a huge problem, it's way above probably all of our pay grades. If we're going to sit down and have a discussion and figure out what we need to do, the one thing I'm not going to have a discussion about is how we got here and why. Quite frankly, I don't even care about that. That's way above us. What you need to focus on is they're here now, they're people, let's give them the support that we can and the resources. Once again, going back to the housing thing, I think especially now, right, you need to have all those partners sitting at the table. And for me, I think this is where your community organizations really take the lead. I think that they're the first ones, that frontline defense. And I look at the feds, our federal partners, our state, the city, all of these other resources are there to figure out how we can get those support services. And quite frankly, for many of these newcomers, you know, they're probably going to feel more comfortable going to community organizations and look for support, right? Some of the places where they're coming from, they may not look at a building like this as all that friendly. And that's the last thing we want to do. We want to make sure they're here, let's take care of them. We're dealing with that in Air, Massachusetts right now, where neighbors, we share a school system.
Thirty seconds.
We had about a hundred and fifty residents' families come in in the last couple of weeks. And it is really just all about, I don't care what impact it's going to have and how much it's going to cost me for our school budget, they need to be taken care of. They're people.
Pull your mic down, Counselor. Counselor, pull your mic down.
How would you communicate and keep the council informed?
So that was, as I mentioned at the beginning, that was a big piece of our administration, making sure that you have as much information as possible. Once again, you know, you need to answer to your residents, your supporters, your, the voters. And so the most information that we can give you, the better off we'll be. So we had, we communicated with the city council, text messages, sometimes it was face-to-face. I prefer face-to-face, to be perfectly honest with you. You know, phone calls, really whatever is comfortable for you. And there are some cases where, you know, a simple text can go out, or it needs to be an individual phone call to discuss what's going on. A lot of the times, you would see me if there was a fire, a police situation, DPW situation one in the morning, you know? And I will operate the same way. You may think it's a little unorthodox. I'm going to be out there, you're going to be getting the information as soon as possible, as soon as I can get it to you. I'm not going to wake you up at one in the morning or so, unless there was something that I, was that dire that I needed, then I will. You will have my cell phone. There were many counselors that called at one or two in the morning with situations. That is not a problem. It is about open communication.
When you think about performing the job as city manager here, what are the three responsibilities you think will consume most of your time? And what percentage of time do you think that'll take up? Just as you do the pie chart, where's the energy go?
So having worked in the, at the time, the fourth largest city, hundred and five residents, I would say just kind of on an eighty-thousand-foot level, I would say that, you know, obviously economic development and growth are going to be issues that take a lot of time. I think another issue, and I guess I kind of do as a big umbrella, is that building relationships, right? Whether that's with you, staff, community, leaders out there, that's, I guess I cast a wide net when I say that. And then I think really making sure that the day-to-day operations are running smoothly. And a lot of that is going to be, you know, identifying problems, developing a plan to solve those problems, and then executing that plan. But let me say something, Counselors, you know, no day is the same as a city manager, okay? You're smaller, I get it, but really Lowell and Chelsea, you're kind of, it's the same thing. It's a twenty-four-seven operation. No hour is the same. You know, I walked into, drove into my pocket spot around seven fifteen one day, ended up having, thought I had a handful of meetings. I had the custodian from the library come out and said, it's raining in the library. And I thought, well, there's a leak, right? Just said, no, I literally walked in and it was raining. The reading room up on the third floor, something this large here, it was like it was raining outside. And that consumed my rest of the week. Now, there were some meetings that I had scheduled for that week. I still had to run over, take care of the meetings, run back into the library and get that all straightened away. I mean, it took about a month to get it all operationally, but those initial, what do you do for that crisis and emergency situation? So you have to be able to multitask and be ready to change on the fly.
So, please let us know, in your past work experience, what was your biggest controversy that you're involved in? And in retrospect, would you have done anything differently?
So I'm not sure, you know, the biggest controversy, but I will say, one of the things that happened to us in the city of Lowell, we were very proactive. We made sure that we had a council agenda meeting on Wednesdays the day after to go over all of your motion responses, or the council's motion responses in Lowell. We had a council prep before meeting with those department heads that went on, right? So we were, we were really prepared all the time. We didn't want to be caught off guard. We had, in the Hamilton Canal District, our last big major parcel of redevelopment in the downtown area, the first two parcels that were going to be brought in front of the city council. Now, we had worked with the council, the DPD did, everybody thought we were good to go. The parcels eight and nine were going to be housing units. And, you know, we got to the council meeting and, boy, there was a lot of opposition to housing. There was an idea in the city that there was enough housing downtown they didn't want to see. And we ended up pulling it off the agenda. We said, okay, let's go back. The council was, you know, a little taken aback. We didn't want to put anybody in an awkward position. We pulled it back. We went back out into the community, held a number of other meetings to address concerns, and then brought it back. But the lesson that was learned was that as proactive as we were and always making sure that we were on top of it, of things, and almost to a panic level, you know, I guess we got a little complacent and we kind of missed that. We missed that there was the possibility
Thirty seconds.
...of this outside, you know, opposition to it. And, boy, it definitely, you know, refocused us for the next two years after that as well, that we were, you know, took extra caution to make sure we were prepared, so.
My question for you is, how do you approach addressing urban challenges and prioritizing them while at the same time including all stakeholders?
So, you know, for us, and for me and Shirley, it's always about communicating. So we're always trying, if we have something that we're going to propose, we're out there proactively getting as much information as possible. I mean, a town meeting, I have to sell my budget and all the other warrant articles to two hundred residents that show up. So we do a lot of pre-work and making sure they get as much information as possible. In terms of the challenges, you know, we talked about housing, and if you want to look at the other pillars, if you will, the education, that's always a challenge in a gateway community. I was the conduit between the city side and the school side. In Lowell, anything that happened, I was the first point of contact. I worked directly with the superintendent. That relationship is critical to build. In terms of your public safety, you know, one of the challenges, they seem to be operating well, they have enough equipment, they're, you know, they're in a good place. But you will be talking about possibly building another fire station. And I had reached out to the fire department to ask some questions, and, you know, it's definitely something that could be on the horizon and something that the city definitely needs. In terms of economic growth, once again, going back to that, there's benefits to that, but there's also things that you need to make sure that when you're growing, that you're looking out and you're mitigating those kind of pitfalls that you could find yourself in. And then the quality of life issues, right? Not forgetting that the neighborhoods, right? That you need to be able to make sure that those streets are plowed, that potholes are fixed, that lighting is good, trash is picked up. Those are basic city services. One of the things that I implemented in Lowell was a need program. We had an absentee landlord issue with probably about five or six people. They lived in these beautiful homes in the Tony suburbs, but they were making the money on the back of the people that couldn't speak up for themselves. I know I don't have much time here, but we went in, we organized a group here, fire, police, inspectional services, health, neighborhood services, and we went in full force in inspection and basically with the goal to try and have them sell those homes, because what they were doing to the people in those rooms was disgusting, quite frankly.
Thank you. Counselor Brown.
Mr. McGovern, can you tell us how you would resolve a conflict with an employee? And give us an example?
So once again, I deal in Lowell, I dealt with the frontline with all, a lot of the personnel issues. Town of Shirley, the same thing. So there are many ways you can deal, right? Some situations, you know, needs a softer touch, right? Sometimes it needs to be a little firmer. I think that open and honest communication. There are some times where you may need a corrective action plan, right? And then there are some times where it's, whatever they did was so egregious that they just need to go. The biggest thing, you want to make sure that what you're doing is following your HR policies, following what you can do legally, you know? But I don't really have any issues in the town of Shirley, and we really didn't have any in Lowell, because we had that open communication with the unions. I think that's extremely critical. One situation we did have was about five-thirty, we're all eating dinner in the manager's office. We did that before our city council meetings. And I hear yelling up on the third floor, and I'm like, I mean, it was bad. I go up and it was the city engineer and a staff member separated them, they're, you know, brought them downstairs to the manager's office, talked to them individually, realized that it wasn't going to be resolved that night. They were there till seven o'clock. I sent them both home, okay, for the night. We'll deal with this with HR tomorrow, okay? But what it really was about was, the city engineer was telling the staff member, the junior engineer, that he had to remove a pride flag off his desk. And, you know, we couldn't fire him because ignorance isn't a fireable offense. But what we did was, we met with the engineer the next day, and we ended up, we said that you're going to have to go to training and you're going to be suspended. Within a couple of days, he resigned from. We both saw the best purpose to resign, so.
Thank you, Mr. McGovern. My second question is, describe your relationship with the state and other municipalities and give us an example of that.
Sure. I can give you a lot of examples. Growing up in Lowell and being involved with government most of my life here, you learn very early on, it's about partnerships. And in Lowell, nothing happens without partnerships. While I was with the city, we ended up, we had to, we, our Hamilton Canal area, we had a parcel that was owned by the National Park. The Department of Interior operates the National Park. We had to work with Congresswoman Songus to get a land swap deal done. It had to get voted on by Congress. It took a while, but that partnership and that effort between those two federal, we worked with Senators Markey and Senator Warren on a tiger grant. And at the time, we were awarded a sixteen-million-dollar tiger grant, the largest of any municipality ever. There were eight bridges that go into the downtown area, and it was basically, they were owned privately by Anel, and it was choking off the downtown. Our buses couldn't get into the downtown, and so we worked with them to get this tiger grant. We worked with the university, at the time Chancellor Meehan, to get that tiger grant. In terms of the state, once again, we had had a little stagnant issue with the Hamilton Canal. We realized that it had to do with infrastructure. We ended up getting a Massworks grant because of our state delegation and working with the administration. We worked hand-in-step with our delegation. Got another Massworks grant for a Salapoli issue. In the state level in Shirley, my relationships that I've built at the state house over the last thirty years helped me to get funding back, about two hundred thousand dollars in funding, and in Shirley, that might as well be twenty million dollars. So, you know, I understand how critical it is to work with all of these partners and the value it brings.
Seeing a room full of youth, what vision do you have for the youth of Chelsea?
That they're healthy and safe, you know, and that they have opportunities. You know, it appears that you run a pretty vibrant recreation slash youth program. We had a program in the city of Lowell that ran year-round. What we did was, we actually created a Health and Human Services Department, and we brought recreation under that umbrella because we thought it would be a chance for them to grow and expand, rather than just being a standalone, you know, department down in the basement type thing. But once again, it's about those partnerships within the community. In Lowell, I mean, UTEC, UTEC in Lowell, United Teen Equality, they would just, at the White House last week, and recognized by President Biden, we used a lot of CDGB, CDBG'd money to work with programs like UTEC, Coalition for Better AIC, CMMA, the Cambodian Mutual Assistance, Girls Inc., YWCA Youth Program, Boys and Girls Club. You know, to be able to give them the opportunity with education, then after-school programs and summer programs, jobs, 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 keeping them busy and giving them opportunities to be able to succeed.
Please describe your approach and experience in dealing with public
Please describe your approach and experience in dealing with public safety issues.
So, public safety issues, very, very comfortable with that. You know, I was the point person for police and fire. We had an excellent relationship with Superintendent Taylor of police and Chief Winwood of fire. Really didn't have any union issues and that goes back to that communication piece. I attended the monthly comstat meetings with police. You know, in fire, I was the head of the assessment that was done for the fire department that took a look at staffing, it took a look at the facilities, their equipment. We made sure we got there that, we actually funded all of the firefighters for a second set of turnout gear, bought extractors, basically the big washing machines to clean their turnout gear after a fire. You know, so it's something that I'm very, very comfortable in working with. I also think that, you know, when we, in our first year or so, there was a real big uptick in gunshots and shootings around the city. And, you know, I'm not a police officer, it's what they do, I think, but one of our benefits was that coming up with a plan and working with the police department and presenting it to the council and the community, that is just as valuable to show that the community, that you do have a course of action and that you're concerned and that there is a plan to hopefully stop this.
My question is, what does diversity, equality, and inclusion mean to you and how and why is it important in a city manager's role?
I think probably the second piece first, Mr. President. I think it's very, very important for the city manager to be out in the forefront for any DEI initiatives, right? Because you are the leader, you're the face of the organization, and if you are up there and talking about any matter really, so to speak, but particularly with DEI, that it signals that there's credibility and that we're serious about it. You know, I think that what you would want to take a look at, maybe partnering with Bunker Hill Community College, I know they did this Lowell, Middlesex Community, that all staff attend a training program, right? Take a look at the human rights campaign and see what their municipal criteria is and making sure that you're meeting that. But, you know, and sometimes, like I said, it's the simple things of just posting the jobs, but it's not just about, you know, employment, right? Is a bigger piece to that. It's really just truly, you know, respecting people for the different color of their skin, their sexual orientation, and just being inclusive. We have a, in Shirley, there's a lot of trees, there's a lot of woods, and we have a section in what we call our downtown area, but it's part of an environmental justice area. And you would think that, well, they can just get up to the middle of town and the northern part of the town to go through the trails and all of the conservation land. Well, that's not the case. They very rarely kind of leave this area that they're within. We had a seven-acre posse of land, an old park and pond, and we're actually revitalizing that area right now and beautifying it and bringing it back to the way it was 40 years ago. And I think that that's also very important.
Closing question. You'll have two or three minutes to tell us why Chelsea and why you.
So, you know, I'm not looking for just a job, right? That was said, I think, maybe nine months ago, somebody mentioned that to you. I'm not looking for just a job, right? I'm looking for this job. I'm not here because of money. I'm not here because I'm looking to get my last three highest years. I'm not here because my board is forcing me out. I'm here because I want to be here, okay? You know, when I started this process, or this process began, I should say, you know, I drove into the city on, I think, January night, it was snowing, and just that hustle and bustle and, you know, then coming into this building and, you know, reminding me of Lowell City Hall, right? I felt comfortable, right? And this is where I belong. You know, my wife and I are 100% committed to living in the city. You're going to see us out, you're going to see us in the community. I think that's extremely important. You know, Chelsea and Lowell, very similar, as I mentioned, 24/7 operations, they never sleep. I think my experience of running all facets of the day-to-day operations in the city of Lowell will allow me to hit the ground running. There's a lot of good things that are happening here in Chelsea, but there's also a lot of challenges or, once again, I like to think, opportunities. And I think my background of being able to look at a problem, come up with that plan, and executing that plan, I think, will be a great fit here. You know, I want to be part of moving Chelsea forward, it's exciting, right? But in the same breath, making sure, once again, that those people who are the backbone of this community don't get left behind. You know, as a leader and with your leadership, I'll expect that the city takes our new initiatives. We're not going to be a community, under my leadership, we're not going to be a community that sits back and waits for others to do things first. Absolutely not. Thank you.
Well, thank you for the time.
Thank you very much, Counselor.
We appreciate you coming down for the interview. Thank you. We're going to take a recess until 11:10 and then we'll be back with the next candidate.
Thank you, Counselors. The ROD translation services in the back of the room. It's been here from the beginning. Anybody that needs it, please outreach out to her. I'm gonna bring in the next candidate.
Good morning.
Morning.
We will, you will have two minutes to give us a little opening statement.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President and the Honorable Chelsea City Council. It is an honor to be here before you today to be considered as Chelsea's next city manager. When I do public speaking, I usually start by sharing that I stutter. It is something that I've lived with my entire life and I like to be transparent about it. I'll open up with just sharing a little bit about myself. I am currently the Town Manager in Reading, Massachusetts. It is a community of 25,000 residents with an operating budget of about $130 million per year. As Town Manager, I am responsible for the day-to-day operation, working collaboratively with our select board who appoints the Town Manager. Prior to being in Reading, I spent five years in the city of Chelsea as DPW Commissioner. And prior to that, I spent 13 years in the private sector as an engineer. And that position took me around the world. I spent three years in China and in the US. Lived in Philadelphia, in Miami, and in Boston. I am a resident of Chelsea. I live here. It is a community where my wife and I are raising our two daughters, Anna Victoria and Maya. And Chelsea is my home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. We're doing introductions even though we worked together. But I am Damali Vidal, I'm a City Councilor at large, and thank you for being here today. My first question is, can you please describe how you view the distinction between your day-to-day operational responsibilities and the policy with respect to the relationship with City Council?
Thank you for the question, Counselor. As City Manager, my responsibility is to ensure the proper day-to-day operation of the city. The City Council sets the tone. The City Council sets the legislative agenda for the city. My role, my job as a City Manager is to translate that policy into our day-to-day operation. I make it a point to work collaboratively with the Council. And I do so in Reading today. I work very closely with our select board. And in Reading, we have an elected town meeting. And I make it a point to have two-way dialogue where we are working together. We are being innovative and most importantly, we are being proactive. In government, we tend to be reactive. We tend to not foresee what are the issues that are coming our way. And it is my goal as City Manager to balance that approach. Manage the day-to-day operation and work with the City Council to translate your policies into the fabric of our city.
Good morning. My name is Daniel Lopez, District 4. Please describe what you believe to be Chelsea's strengths and weaknesses.
Thank you for the question, Counselor. I have no doubt that our biggest strength is our people. Is our people as seen in this room, as seen in our streets, and as demonstrated in this City Council. I have heard in my time in Chelsea that Chelsea is a special place. Chelsea is a community where we have each other's back. Where we, when someone is at need, we answer the call. We saw that very specifically during the global pandemic. We, Chelsea at times was the worst-hit city in the nation. Yet, no one in our city went hungry. No one in our city felt abandoned. We came together, government, our nonprofit partners, the private sector. And we were able to accomplish so much in such a short amount of time. Me personally, working with our team, working with the Counselor, we were able to set up food distribution lines. We were able to establish a hotel where residents who didn't have the option to quarantine had an option. Our greater strength is by far our people. In terms of weaknesses, I like to say that it is probably our urban challenges. They are not unique to Chelsea, but we certainly have our fair share of urban challenges. But I see challenges as opportunities. I see challenges as opportunity for growth to continue shaping what our city can be. More specifically, you know, our regional housing crisis. Our regional housing crisis is something that we will need to continue working on. Congestion in our streets with all of the development that is happening in Chelsea and around Chelsea. That congestion, that level of development is putting a strain on our city services. Climate change, I could not have any conversation about urban challenges without talking about climate change, particularly to Chelsea as a coastal community. We need to focus on strengthening our waterfront and also making sure that the infrastructure that we are building is resilient.
Time, 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 time. Pull your mic down, please.
Good morning.
Yes.
Good morning. My name is Joanna Recubron, Council of District 6. And my question is, please describe and give an example how you engage directly with residents throughout the city and how you treat them.
Thank you, Counselor. I treat everyone with respect. I treat everyone with dignity and I treat everyone as though I am no better than them. Because, in all honesty, Counselor, I am not. Spending 13 years in the private sector really taught me, and it was in a service industry, really taught me the value of putting customers first. In government, our customers are our residents. Our customers are our taxpayers. So, in my role, in all the roles that I've held, but particularly as City Manager, my priority is our residents. I live by two words which I speak of often, and that is responsiveness and accountability. Anytime that a resident has a concern, they want to feel heard. They want to feel acknowledged by their City Manager. I know that in many instances, I have met with you out in the streets, whether it's a complaint about a leaning light pole or a pothole or a sewer backup. I make it a point to get out of my office and to go see the residents where they are. I do not use very complicated language. I do not use technical jargon. I try to speak in a language that our residents can relate to. And at times, that means speaking in Spanish and having the cultural awareness to be able to effectively communicate with our residents. And in all of my time in the public sector, that has translated to all of my teams, to my staff. Once they see that the leader is leading by, is doing this way, that will translate into the entire organization. Thank you.
Could you describe to us the process you follow in setting the priorities for your administration?
Thank you, Counselor. First and foremost, it's very important for me to work collaboratively with the City Council. I have no qualms about the fact that you are the boss of the City Manager. You are the body that sets the tone, the tone for our city. But my job is to work collaboratively with the City Council, listening to your priorities and maybe bringing best practices from communities around us. My strategy is also to ensure that in any strategic setting process, we engage those that are going to be affected by said strategy. That involves our employees. That involves our department heads. We need to listen to our boards and commissions. We have a lot of dedicated volunteers who come and listen to, say, for example, the Traffic and Parking Commission. They need to be involved in any kind of process that involves strategy. I am not a leader who sets an agenda by myself. I am a collaborative leader, a servant leader, who really tries to create and foster an environment of collaboration, of interdepartamental collaboration, where all of our employees feel heard. Thank you, Counselor.
I'm City Councilor Todd Taylor, District 1. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
How do you intend to walk the fine line in a community that has divergent and competing interests? Right? Listening to all sides, but then having to make the hard decisions that actually need to be made? You know, while still trying to have some sort of unity?
Thank you for the question, Counselor. First and foremost, my charge, my duty as a City Manager, is to ensure the long-term fiscal health of our city. That is what this City Council entrusts me with, and that is what I will continuously deliver to the City Council. My priority is the city of Chelsea and that the city government can function and continue the positive trajectory that we have been on with our previous administrations. I will work collaboratively and transparently with the City Council to ensure that you are aware of anything that is going on. With that said, government cannot do it alone. We saw it in the global pandemic. We are seeing it in our housing crisis. We are seeing it in our most recent migrant crisis. As City Manager, as the face of the city, it is my role to bring partners together. Partners in the nonprofit sector, partners in the healthcare sector, in the private sector, and in our state, our state and federal delegations. But that relationship needs to be based in dialogue, in understanding, and in trust. We need to ensure that those conversations are had in a way that keeps moving Chelsea forward and addresses all of the needs of our residents. But just in closing, Counselor, let me be clear that my priority, my guiding light, is to first ensure that Chelsea is taken care of, that our fiscal health is managed in the city while putting residents first.
My question for you is, and thank you for being here, Philink.
Thank you.
What experience have you had working in a diverse community with residents of different backgrounds? And how would you approach city communications?
Thank you for the question, Counselor. Diversity for me is something very personal. I was born in Managua, Nicaragua, and my mother migrated to Miami when I was seven years old. It put me in a place that was very different than my own. I had to learn the language. I had to learn the culture and really get the tools to not only survive, but thrive. When I went to college at 18 years old, I was fortunate enough to receive a scholarship at Lafayette College, which is in eastern Pennsylvania. And I can tell you that it was very much an environment that was different than my own. Not a lot of diversity at Lafayette, yet I was able to, again, thrive in this environment. My theme overall is to find common ground, to not focus on what makes us different, but what makes us the same. More currently, in Reading, I feel like it is something that I have really worked on and I have really focused on sharing myself, sharing all aspects of myself. Because at the end of the day, we all want to feel included. Finally, and just in closing, my experience in China was probably the most significant in that. I moved across the world and was immersed in a language and culture that was very different than mine, than my own. I was able to create deep friendships. I was able to learn and value other people's cultures, other people's languages. Just because we're different, it doesn't make us any better or worse. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilor Brown, District 8. Thank you for being here. Can you tell the Council what's your approach in hiring and evaluating individual candidates for a potential membership of your management team?
Thank you, Counselor. Anytime there is a hiring process, the start is to ensure that we have a job description that is accurate to the position and compensation that is in line with our peers. We need to ensure that those two things are tight so that we can receive a qualified pool of candidates. In all hirings, I make it a point to seek candidates from areas that maybe in the past have been ignored in order to continue growing our diversity. I do not make hiring decisions on my own, although I am the appointing authority. When I do a hiring process, I create the hiring committee that involves peers, that involves supervisors, and when appropriate, involves direct reports. This, following an interview, when we have the hiring decision, I make it a point to speak last. I do not want to set the tone or lead the hiring committee into one particular candidate. I am very conscious to let everyone in the hiring committee know that there is an equal vote. And this process translates outside of the hiring process, outside of the hiring committee, and really fosters a collaborative and interdepartamental environment where we feel like we all can have a say into the operation of the city. In terms of evaluating employees, I am a firm believer in annual performance reviews. It is something that we do religiously. I also believe in coaching. I believe in setting one-on-ones because I feel that all employees want to be given the opportunity to succeed. And all employees need to be able to know where they stand. Thank you, Counselor.
For the next question, could you please silence your phones?
Thank you.
It's really interrupting the speakers.
All right.
Yes, continue, please.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. My question, you kind of answered the first half, which is describe your approach to supervision of department heads. If you could please just elaborate a little bit more about how you would ensure accountability and collaboration between these departments to ensure that the community's needs are being met?
Thank you for the question, Counselor. In my professional career, I have made it a point of creating a positive work environment. I have gone out of my way and to lead by example, to lead from the front, if you will. I use a tool which I learned early on in my career, which is management by walking around. I get out of my office. I try to engage all employees, regardless of where they are in the hierarchy, on a one-on-one basis, to learn their names, learn who their families are, to really show them that their organization cares about them and their success. In terms of how to manage department heads, we have monthly department head meetings where we come together and we share what are the struggles of each department. We also do semi-annual retreats where we go off-site. And we have some professional development exercises. We have an ability to learn from each other and to really create an environment where we can support each other. Finally, I shared earlier that I live by two words, and I have lived by these two words my entire career, which is responsiveness and accountability. I believe in responding to every email that is sent to me as a City Manager. And that is something that I translate as a priority throughout my organization. And finally, accountability. I feel that in government, it is very easy to, again, be reactive. But in my administration, I make it a point to be a proactive government that is focused on accountability to the Council and to each other and to residents. Thank you.
Like many cities, Chelsea's facing an urban crisis, particularly housing. What would be your plan to address the housing crisis in Chelsea?
Thank you, Counselor. As you know, this is an issue that is not only affecting Chelsea. It is affecting our region, and it is conversations that are going to involve a significant amount of dialogue. Currently, we are going through the process of the new MBTA communities legislation and really figuring out how to best implement those new regulations while also keeping our community intact. There is no magic pill. There is no panacea. But in Chelsea, we need to make sure that growth and development is planned and does not result in a strain in our public services. Whether that is, as I mentioned earlier, traffic, whether it is parking, whether it is the demands on our schools and the demands on our public safety teams. It is something that we need to address, and it is something that I plan to do as City Manager with the help of the City Council, but also with the help of our legislators. I feel that the state has been playing a role and will continue playing a role in providing the needed funds to not only build housing, but build the infrastructure that is required to support that housing. As DPW Commissioner and now City Manager in Reading, one of my main priorities is to seek funding. Seek funding from our state delegations, our federal delegations. As you know, Chelsea has more than its fair share of urban challenges. And with that, we need to get more than our fair share of funding.
Thank you very much. My question is, what economic development opportunities would you like to pursue in the city of Chelsea?
Thank you, Counselor. I think this is something that I would continue, first of all. The very strong performance of our previous two City Managers. As you know, Chelsea is seeing a significant amount of economic development. What I would first like to focus on is supporting our small businesses, particularly in the downtown, in partnership, of course, with the City Council and the Chamber of Commerce. I have learned in my time, both in Chelsea and in Reading, that our small businesses in our community really are the fabric of our community, really set up Chelsea to have a vibrant community, a vibrant downtown. Small businesses provide jobs for our residents. Small businesses attract visitors. That make Chelsea more attractive. So, Counselor, one of my focuses will be to support our small business community. In terms of our big hairy audacious goals, if you will, I believe that the waterfront and the work began in our past, in our previous administration is something that really has the potential to bring significant amount of tax revenue, a significant amount of economic development. It is a complicated conversation because the Chelsea waterfront is part of a designated port area, right, a DPA? But it is something that has incredible potential to really transform the city and really be a boon for our budgets. Thank you.
My question, describe your direct experience and level of involvement with municipal finance, human resources, and collective bargaining.
Thank you, Counselor. As City Manager, my main responsibility is to ensure the proper, healthy, and long-term financial standing of our city. We in Chelsea are very fortunate to have a significant level of reserves. We in Chelsea are fortunate to have a significant amount of free cash. But again, it is always my priority to ensure that that legacy continues. In my time in Chelsea, I led the development of the Capital Improvement Plan that was approved by this City Council. And in the five years that I was here, we saw a significant amount of investment. And I say investment because I don't see it as spending. I see it as investing for our future. We saw significant investment in our public buildings. We saw significant investments in our roads and our sidewalk. And we addressed water and sewer issues that had been a burden to residents in many neighborhoods, like on Maverick Street, on Essex Street. We completed very, very significant projects. In terms of our operating budgets, it is very important to make sure that we are balancing that we are balancing all of our needs and ensuring that we stay under our mandate of Proposition 2.5. In Massachusetts, as you know, government cannot grow more than 2.5%. And that requires having really healthy conversations with department heads because there is no way that we are going to fund everything we need. With regards to human resources, I am very involved in collaborative, as I answered the question about hiring. Also, in terms of discipline, it is something that is very important to involve our human resources department, legal department. Finally, with regards to collective bargaining, I have had a very healthy relationship with all of our unions when I was Commissioner of Public Works in Chelsea and also as Town Manager in Reading. I believe in managing, though, not through a collective bargaining agreement, but managing through relationships, managing through thrust.
Thank you.
I really appreciate your transparency in mentioning your stutter in the beginning of this and the way in which you're answering these questions. I just want to really name that. Thank you. We're round two, you're doing amazing, and we're almost done here. We're halfway through. My question is, can you describe your authentic self at the end of the day when you go home and you take off your tie? Who is Fidel Maltese?
Thank you, Counselor. First and foremost, I am a father. I am a father of two. Anna Victoria is six, Maya is 10. When I worked in this building, I made it a point to bring them to work, to have employees know that being a father is very important to me, to my identity and to my priorities as a person, but also as a professional. I am blessed to have an amazing wife, and I try to be her biggest cheerleader. And that is a big part of my identity. I am a runner, so I ran Boston in 2022. And it is really the way that I try to sharpen the saw, to manage stress, to manage work-life balance. Running has given me an opportunity to improve myself as an individual. I am Latino. I love all Latino culture. And as you all know, Latinos are not a homogeneous population. Me from Nicaragua, I enjoy the diversity of our food, the diversity of our music. And finally, I'm a son. I'm an immigrant. I came to this country when I was seven, and my mother worked incredibly hard, and she is the reason why I am here today. Without the work sacrifice of my mother, I would not be here before you today. And it is not a matter of paying it back to her. It is a matter of taking that experience and making her proud each and every day. Thank you.
My second question is, how do you plan to respond and support the immigration crisis that has impacted Chelsea? How will you help the new Americans coming in?
Thank you, Counselor. That is a very complicated question, and it is a question that we are all struggling with in the state of Massachusetts. I have been a part of Bike Weekly Call, so every other week call held by Lieutenant Governor, Lieutenant Governor Kim Driscoll. We are actually hosting an event next Friday in Reading, October 13th, where the Lieutenant Governor is coming in order to continue this dialogue. As city manager, my main priority is going to be to ensure that Chelsea receives more than its fair share of funding, that while we want to be responsive, while we will be responsive, we need to ensure that the state in particular gives us the adequate funding to make sure that we are not setting other priorities aside. Counselor, I'm going to be frank, I am an immigrant. I came to this country when I was seven years old. And I know that we are a city of immigrants, we are a country of immigrants. And I will continue that legacy of welcoming, of supporting. But as city manager, as I shared earlier, my main focus is to ensure the fiscal health of our city. And I will do that through constant advocacy, through knocking on doors with our state rep, with our state senator, and all the way up the chain to our governor, to ensure that Chelsea is being given the proper amount of resources to see this crisis through.
Good, again. My questions are simple. How will you communicate with and keep council informed?
Thank you, Counselor. I said it earlier, but let me say it again. I work for the city council, right? That is very clear, and it is something that I have led with my entire career. My job is to ensure that the city council is informed and is never blindsided, is never caught off guard with either news, good or bad. So I do that through text messages, phone calls, emails. In Reading, we have a newsletter that goes out and has all of the events and keeps our electeds and it keeps our residents aware. I also have a practice of scheduling one-on-ones, so where I meet with each member of the city council and listen directly and personally to the challenges that are affected today. Again, just to highlight two of the words that I try to live with every day, which is responsiveness and accountability. I make it a point to answer the phone regardless of the day, if it was on the weekends. This job is not a 40-hour-a-week job. As I know personally, this is a job that requires that phone to be answered all hours of the day, all hours of the weekend. My job is to be proactive, and that involves communication as well. When I foresee something around the bend, my job is to ensure that the city council, that the electeds are never caught off guard. And I try to do that effectively.
All right, when you think about performing the job as city manager, what are three responsibilities you expect to spend most of your time on? And as you kind of think of the pie chart, what percentage of your time you think those will consume?
Thank you very much, Counselor. The first piece in said pie chart is operations. So it is managing the day-to-day operations. It is ensuring that all of our staffs have the proper hires, that all of our departments have the tools and the resources to meet the challenge of the day. It also involves continuing to grow our departments, to provide opportunities for them to expand their charge. The second piece of that pie is strategy and vision. As city manager, I need to stay abreast with what is happening at a state level from a legislative standpoint, but also in terms of best practices. What are our neighbors doing, and how is that helping? And constantly shaping the vision of the city. I am not someone who is satisfied with the status quo, as you personally know. I am someone who believes in positive discontent. We need to not be happy with where we are today. But we need to be positive about that unhappiness, right? It needs to be something that is shared as a positive thing. Finally, me personally, professionally, and throughout my organization, I lead with a growth-minded, with a growth mindset, which means that we are never stagnating. We are never okay with being reactive. We are always going to be proactive. With me, that means continuing to focus on my professional growth, me personally, but also instilling that in my team, in my department heads, and also throughout the organization, providing opportunities where our teams can grow. So in summary, Counselor, there's three things. Operation, strategy and vision, and growth. In terms of percentages, I try very hard to do each one of them every day. Of course, it ebbs and flows depending on where we are in the calendar, right? In June, it's going to be 100% operation. In August, it's going to be maybe an opportunity to sharpen the saw, right? And get ready for the next year.
Time. Describe your biggest controversy that you're involved in, and in retrospect, would you have done anything differently?
Thank you, Counselor. Six months into my tenure in Reading, we, our trash company was acquired by a national company. And residents did not see trash pickup for three consecutive weeks. You can imagine the level of impact, the level of frustration that our residents were seeing. It was by hard, the hardest period of my tenure. On a personal note, it was personally frustrating to me, given my background in public works. It is something that I felt that I should be able to fix. Entering Week Three, I asked our DPW employees to meet me at the garage and to go out there and pick up the trash ourselves. And we did that at 7:00 a.m. on a Monday morning. We went street by street and picked up the solid waste. We did that and really put this company on blast, if you will. I shared it on social media. We had recordings out there. And my stance to them was, if you are not going to come through for us, we are going to, we're going to take care of it ourselves. They received so much backlash. It landed on the Boston Globe, for instance, that within a matter of days, it was turned around, and things went back to normal. In terms of what I would have done differently, is I would have done it sooner. I was hopeful that things were going to turn around. I was hopeful then that, you know, this company had a contract and was going to comply with it. In the end, it took us taking matters into our own hands to force them to do that. And that was a personal experience for me in terms of when something is coming, being very proactive with it. Thank you.
My next question for you is, how do you approach addressing urban challenges and prioritizing them while at the same time including all stakeholders?
Thank you, Counselor. I will answer the stakeholder aspect first. And I'm sure you have heard a theme of collaboration in all of my answers. I do not like to lead. I am not a general, I'll say. I am not someone who sets mandates that have to be implemented by people. I like to involve all of our stakeholders because, as we said earlier, our urban challenges require more than us. Government cannot do it alone. That includes our nonprofit partners, that includes our healthcare providers, that includes our state and federal delegation. In terms of challenges, and I'll say what I mentioned earlier, I don't see challenges as problems. I see them as opportunities for growth. We talked already about the housing crisis. That is something that will require a thoughtful dialogue and of how we are going to move forward to ensure that any development does not continue putting a strain on our city resources, importantly, traffic, importantly, congestion, importantly, our ability to support from a public safety standpoint. I would be remiss to not mention climate change. As an individual, and in my experience, both in Reading and in Chelsea, I've been a big proponent of continuing to solve the climate change challenge proactively. In Reading, we currently have a project that is largely funded through the state and the federal government to get ahead of flooding issues. While I was in Chelsea, we worked very hard to expand our water and sewer infrastructure to provide additional capacity. I think, you know, one thing that we see very often is food insecurity. That is something that is affecting a lot of our residents. And, you know, me as an immigrant, I am not a stranger to not having food on your plate. And particularly for children, it is something that is incredibly difficult to live with.
Thank you. My question, can you tell us, Counsel, how you would resolve a conflict with an employee? And give us an example.
Thank you, Counselor. First and foremost, any kind of employee issue needs to be dealt with the sensitivity that it deserves. We need to be very mindful, and as city manager, my job is to minimize the liabilities on the city. We need to be very thoughtful and engage our human resources department early on, involve our department head, so it is very clear what is going on. And most importantly, involve our legal department. We need to have a dialogue where any kind of issue is resolved in a way that does not open up the city for any kind of liabilities. I will say that I am a firm believer in transparency, in coaching, in telling employees where they are exceeding at, but also telling employees what they can be doing better. I think that if we are able to provide this communication, it really sets up employees for success. I firmly believe, and I lead this in the way that I handle myself every day, that we all want to come to work and do a good job. We all want to have a successful career. There are things that at times, whether it's a professional or things at home, that can get in the way of that. And as city manager, it is my responsibility to make sure that all departments are operating in this way, that we are providing all of our employees with an opportunity to thrive, to shine.
My second question is, describe your relationship with state and other municipal officials. Give us an example.
Thank you very much, Counselor. I try to have a very close relationship with our state delegation. That means text messages, that means phone calls, it means coffees. I feel that our state delegation is really the main advocate group to ensure that Chelsea's needs are prioritized at a state level. Same thing goes with our federal delegation. I mentioned an example earlier of a project in Reading that we are doing that is largely funded by state funds and federal funds. It is a $5 million climate resiliency project. $2 million of that is funded by the Massachusetts Municipal Vulnerability Program. And another $2 million of that is funded through the federal earmark process. And I work collaboratively with our Congressman Seth Moulton and also with our senators, Senator Warren and Senator Markey, to, again, continue making sure that we are getting the funding that we deserve. One more example that I'll share is that in my time here in Chelsea, we worked on the Regional Office of Climate and Resiliency, that we knew that it was a priority of ours to have staff that was dedicated in chasing these grants, in also setting policies that was going to set up for success. Along with several colleagues, we approached the BAR Foundation, and we were successful in receiving $600,000 in grant funding, outside private funding, that really was able to leverage. That is an office that is shared with Revere and Winthrop. And again, it's another testament to working collaborative. Rainfall doesn't care where our city boundaries are. Traffic certainly doesn't care where our boundaries are. And we need to work closely and collaboratively with our neighbors to really address any challenge.
Being that we have a room full of youth, what vision do you have for our youth here in Chelsea?
Thank you, Counselor. I will say that I see myself in Chelsea's youth. My success story is not a testament of my intelligence. It is not a testament of who I am as an individual. It is incremental steps that have enabled me to get here where I am today. And it involved a lot of people. It involved a lot of shoulders, a lot of hands. a lot of people. It involved a lot of shoulders, a lot of hands, a lot of pushes, a lot of people that were there to rally for me. When I was in Chelsea, I made it a point to hire all Chelsea residents in our Public Works Department, and to give Chelsea residents an opportunity to have a shot at these really amazing and transforming careers. And I am proud to say that the majority, if not all, of our current DPW is formed of Chelsea residents. As city manager, I plan to continue that work, and also translate that into our 911 dispatch, to translate that into our police and fire. When I was in Chelsea, we began conversations with St. Rose Parish, and Father Elario in particular, where we talked about maybe the possibility of a partnership with either St. Rose or another private entity to transform the St. Rose space into what could be a community center or a youth center. That obviously would be transformational for the city, because we need to provide all of our youth a safe space for them to thrive in, regardless of their interests, whether it's athletics, whether it's arts, whether it's robotics. Our youth need to have the required funding, the required resources for them to reach their full potential. And finally, I'll say that, as city manager, I will continue the relationships that are already in place in Chelsea. There are many groups that are already working on youth issues. I will expand on the work of the Youth Commission to make sure that youth voices are heard all through government.
Please describe your approach and experience in dealing with public safety issues.
Thank you, Counselor. First of all, I believe in the intersectionality of public safety. As Public Works, I worked with many of you counselors today on improving lighting around the city, right? When I first came to Chelsea, on Broadway in the downtown, we had a lot of lights that were out, and it just fostered a broken window concept. So it is, public safety doesn't just fall on our police and fire departments. It is something that we need to foster in our entire community, and really work with everyone on, again, fostering interdepartmental collaboration to ensure that we are meeting the needs of our residents, specifically with regards to police and fire. I like to believe that I have a very good relationship with our rank and file, but also with our leadership in both departments. That relationship is not formed because of a title. It is formed because in my time in Chelsea and in my time in Reading, my role is to make sure that our public safety departments have the resources, have the tools, and have the staffing to make sure that they are able to do their jobs appropriately. In Public Works, I was responsible for the maintenance of all buildings, and that was a way that I was able to really get close to and collaborate with our public safety teams. My goal was to make sure that the building was impeccable, so that our firefighters and our police officers had the resources and the tools. So, Counselor, just in closing, I'll say that I believe in the cross-sections of our work. Public safety does not only fall on police and fire, and as city manager, I will work very closely with the City Council on continuing those conversations.
My question, what does diversity, equality, and inclusion mean to you, and how and why is that important in a city manager's role?
Thank you, Counselor, for the very thoughtful question. Diversity, equity, and inclusion is something that has been a part of my career, both in the private sector and in the public sector. As, when I think of diversity, equity, and inclusion, I think of the ability of our residents, of our employees, to bring their whole self to work. And that needs to go beyond race, it needs to go beyond gender, it needs to be conscientious of the struggles of our LGBTQ+ community, it needs to translate into accessibility issues. While I was in Chelsea, I created the Commission on Disability, and really tried to focus on improving the access of handicap people, people living with handicaps in this building. We invested a significant amount, thanks to the Council, of course, in improving our sidewalks, in improving our walking surfaces, so that all of our residents, regardless of their background, regardless of their challenges, can come and thrive. As an immigrant myself, I know what it is like to be the other, and I know that it requires all of us to be welcoming, and to create an environment where we all feel like we belong.
Okay, and a closing question. You have two to three minutes to tell us why Chelsea, and why you.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Counselors, for interviewing me today. It would be my greatest honor to be selected as Chelsea's next city manager. For me, this is personal. I live in Chelsea with my wife, Maria Belén, and our two daughters, Maya and Ana Victoria. I've had the opportunity to work with many of you when I served as DPW Commissioner under the leadership of Tom Ambrosino. Prior to coming into public service, I worked in the private sector for 13 years as a civil engineer in China, Miami, Philadelphia, and Boston. However, that is not where my story started. I come from humble beginnings. I was born in Managua, Nicaragua. When I was seven, my mother migrated to Miami, where she cleaned offices to provide for my two siblings and me. As a single mom, I saw how she struggled as an outsider, and as someone who did not speak the language. Nevertheless, she never gave up, and continued to work to provide a better life for us. That resiliency I witnessed in my mom is the same that I see in our Chelsea residents. I saw this when COVID hit us, as it did, and we saw no end in sight. I am proud to have been able to work with community partners on food dispensaries, programming to support our residents, and in managing our DPW team and their essential work during the height of the pandemic. Chelsea for me is more than just a work environment. It is more than just a job. It is my community. It is where I live, and where I am raising my two daughters, and where I see myself in each of our hardworking residents and youth. I understand Chelsea has its share of urban challenges, but what I've learned through this vibrant community is that in every challenge, there are opportunities for growth, opportunities to show our community power and our community strength. For me, it is not so much a matter of coming to work and building a resume, as it is, as much as it is, to use my education, my lived experiences, and my professional background for the benefit of our community. It is to leverage my experiences to improve the life of our residents. For me, this is coming back home. Thank you, Counselors.
Thank you. Thank you. No. Yeah, we need, yeah. As a matter of time, we will be taking a break from now until 12:55. For the audience, we want to let you know that they'll be logging off Facebook, and we'll pick it back up at 12:55. We're going to be back in session with the final two candidates. If anybody needs a translation services, I see the young lady in the back of the room, please. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, everyone.
You'll have two minutes for an opening statement to the council.
So I want to sort of reintroduce myself to all of you. I mean, I have been working in Chelsea for 20 years this November as the city attorney, but for the past 20 years, I have taken on other roles within the city. In 2008, when BU transitioned out of the city, I became school council, whole new set of school rules and laws. And then, I think after the last recession, we needed someone to become licensing director, so I am also the licensing director for the city of Chelsea. I am the municipal hearing officer for the city of Chelsea, but I also do activities that are for the whole community. I love to do the community work, so that is my volunteer time, not just Chelsea Day, but we've done food truck festivals, we've started a marketplace for young entrepreneurs. I am currently sitting on the committee for the 400th, next year is the 400th anniversary of the settlement of Chelsea. My role has been as city solicitor, as part of the executive committee and the executive office for 20 years. What that means is that I have worked closely, not just with the past two former city managers, but I have been on their teams. I have worked with a lot of these department heads, some for 20 years, some for just five short years, but I have had relationships with all of them. I believe right now, I may be the oldest person, a longest-serving member of the school cabinet right now, because of the changes in our school administrations. I have been involved and sat through two, now two, city manager search committees. I have stepped up, I believe, in both search committees, and taken on more of a role to help the city at least keep the ship afloat, maybe not steer it, but keep the ship afloat while council takes their time in determining who would be the next city manager of Chelsea.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will ask you just to put the microphone a little closer, because I want to make sure that everybody hears what you have to say. I'm Demolvi Do, City Councilor-at-Large, and my first question for you is, can you please describe how you view the distinction between your day-to-day operational responsibilities as a city manager, as well as the policy direction and relationship with City Council?
So I see that as a circle. So the day-to-day operations allow the city manager and the executive team and the administration to give informed decisions, and informed information, and facts, and data to the city council, so they make their policy orders. Policies need to be based on, I believe, an informed decision-making. And that informed decision-making is we're out in the trenches, we're doing it every day as a city staff, and I believe the policies are created through that, and then we report back to the city council to ensure that their policies are being met. I want to point out that the distinction is, is that the legislature, the city council, I believe, sets the policies, and the staff and the administration, we enforce their policies, we make them real, and we ensure that that policy is part of everything that we do, the services, access to services, how we respond to Chelsea emergencies, how we respond to our residents. The policies are those that the city council makes.
Hi, my name is Ennio Lopez, City Council, District Four. My question to you is, can you describe what you believe to be Chelsea's strengths and weaknesses, and what are the challenges?
Okay, so I want to separate Chelsea from Chelsea government. So the city of Chelsea's strength is that we are so welcoming, and we band together, and we create this village, which I believe everybody witnessed during the most recent health emergencies. We've also band together when we became all-city Chelsea. It was a cross-section of many people who went, and the Chelsea, not once but twice, became all-city, all-American city. That's the strength that Chelsea has. The strength that city government has is that we have been able to communicate with all our residents. We have pivoted quickly to respond to emergencies. I believe that is our best strength. Not only that, we are diverse. We are strong, we are old Chelsea, new Chelsea, people not from Chelsea, we are all ethnicities, we are all ages. It's a multi-generational workforce in Chelsea, and we support each other. So that's what I think are our main strengths. There's a whole bunch of other strengths, too. I think, so as a city, what's the weakness? I would like us to be able to be better prepared for when those emergencies happen, that we all come to the table before it happens. That's called risk assessment, and to be able to risk and be prepared for the next health emergency, for the next road issue, for the next fire, so that we have those, the public is prepared. Where do they go? What do they do? So I think that we have some weakness. Government weaknesses, and I'll do this quickly, thank you, Counselor, is that we don't have benchmarks and data. We don't provide that to you. We need to stop providing that to you, so that you can have informed decision-making and policymaking.
Good afternoon. My name is Joanna Recupero, and I'm City Council of District Four. Please describe and give an example how you engage directly residents through the city and how you treat them.
So I consider most of the residents in the city my neighbors, my friends. I lived in Chelsea for 15 years. My parents reside in Chelsea. Very few people know this, I was born in Chelsea. So I approach residents So I approach residents gently. They see me as someone who is in power, someone who is the attorney, la, ba, la, la. They think that I have power. So I try to sit back. I watch their body language. I try to de-escalate the situation, and what they want is information. And I believe my team, my office, and team of employees, that we give out a lot of information on a day-to-day basis. I do wish that I had more training in dealing with people with mental illness, and that's one of the goals I do have, is that we work out how to handle not just mentally illness, but we have an aging population where memory loss and dementia is starting, and they are aggressive, and we are seeing that more and more in City Hall, that I think all of us as a staff, including myself, need to be able to handle the new, our entire population, not just be able to speak the language of the individual in front of us, which I believe I can understand Spanish. I am not fluent in Spanish. I read Spanish, I can even write Spanish, but I am not fluent.
Could you describe to us the process you'll follow to set the priorities for your administration?
So, I thought about this because in the past, council used to sit in a retreat and list the top 10 priorities. There'd be tons of priorities discussed, every January, every two years. And clearly, the administration priorities are those of the city council's priorities. But there are other internal priorities that we need to meet, we need to review. And one of my main priorities is that department heads work a lot better together, that information flows between departments. I don't believe we're at that stage yet. I don't believe, I want to put back in monthly meetings. So I just think that the administration has operation priorities, the city council has policy priorities, and then we need to talk to the public. We need to listen. And we need to listen probably district by district, because each district has different priorities, and then we need to look at the city as a whole.
Todd Taylor, City Council, District One. Thanks for coming, Cheryl.
You're welcome.
How do you intend to walk that fine line in a community that has a lot of different, divergent, and competing interests, while listening to everybody and still being able to make the hard decisions that need to get made?
So that fine line happens a lot more often than you think in Chelsea. But, so, that line is interesting. I feel like sometimes all we hear are the loudest people, and we don't hear those who aren't able to speak for themselves, and we don't hear the most vulnerable people. To walk that line, I feel that we need to hear everybody, have everyone reflect upon their comments, and hear each other, and then you have to make the decision for what's best for the common good. You have to pull the trigger. For example, when, trying to think of some of the de-escalation issues that we've had to do in City Hall, when we make decisions as to which roadway we're going to work on first, and we have to look at our resources, we have to look at our capacity, a lot of that goes into the decision-making as to handling divergent opinions and wishes and desires.
Hello, my name is Penina Vega. I'm District Two City Councilor. Thank you, Cheryl, for being here. My question for you, my question, sorry. My question for you is, what experience have you had working in a diverse community with residents of different backgrounds than your own? And how would you approach communications with residents?
So I've worked in Chelsea for 20 years, and at first I thought that, when I first got here, it was 85 percent Latino. And I thought, wow, that's going to be different than me. But the Latino community, when I first got here, a lot were Caribbean Latinos, and I identify as part of my ethnicity, as West Indian Caribbean. So it was not that different. But then, I go out my way to learn about other cultures. Our Latino community is different. It has changed over time. I've also got to meet a lot of Croatians and Bosnians. I've been to the countries because I feel like that's the way we learn. I sit in meetings and listen because our stakeholders have a wealth of information as to our different and diverse community. But we also have not just diversity in people of color and different ethnicities, but we have diversity in economic status. I was raised similar to quite a bit of Chelsea. I was raised in the lower economic status, and educated and raised by a single mother, so, and I was raised in a large community. And so I identified, when I first came to Chelsea, with a lot of Chelsea at that time. But you have to learn about your community, and being part of the community is how you can effectuate policies and goals.
Hi, thank you for being here. Calvin Brown, District Eight City Councilor. Tell us, to council, your approach in hiring and evaluating candidate for management or leading role in your establishment if you were elected city manager, appointed city manager.
So it is important to hire people who have a connection to the city, a connection to the city. So there's a lot of people who grew up in Chelsea who don't currently reside in Chelsea, who can contribute back to the community that they were raised. It is important to hire people, when you look at their resume, have they been in diverse communities? Have they held responsibility in their prior jobs? Over the years, our hiring practices and how we go about to get and seek and recruit employees has been kind of stagnant because the workforce has changed, and we now need to give people opportunities, we need to give professional development. So when I review someone, can they learn a new skill? Can they learn a new behavior? So when I sit down with them after they've gone through that first or second round of employee interviews, I want to sit down with them, and I want to see what are they going to give to Chelsea? What value are they bringing to our team? And what do they know that I don't know? I think that's part of this. Hiring people who may be smarter than me or know something different than me is key to making a full team for the city.
My question is, describe your approach to the supervision of department heads, staff, and ensuring accountability and collaboration to ensure community needs are met.
I, for one, as an employee here, have always wanted some type of performance evaluation. And I don't say an old-fashioned performance evaluation. I would like my direct supervisor to give me goals and expectations and benchmarks, and see how I am doing meeting those benchmarks and goals. That's an evaluation, I think, as a performance evaluation. I think our staff wants to have and understand what my expectation are of them, of their department, of the city as a whole. I think you have to open communications. I think contact with the department heads as to how are they pursuing the council policies through their daily operations. That is key, in order for me to inform the city council where we are, what our benchmarks are. So supervision is constantly being updated and meeting, whether it be in a formal setting or in an informal setting. Some employees need to be informal. Some employees need to be able to vent. I don't know if it's the boss that they want to vent to, but they should be able to anonymously say, they think their department should be doing this, and this is how we should do it. I don't think we seek employee input as much, and our employees reside in Chelsea. Our employee are residents of Chelsea, or they grew up in Chelsea. And they are the direct line of communication with our residents. So we need to know what they think they should improve upon. And we should be doing more professional training, more seminars, more working together, and so that we could hire from within, which I like to do. I do hire from within, or I hire from within Chelsea.
Like many cities, Chelsea's facing an urban crisis, particularly housing. What would be your plan to address the housing crisis in Chelsea?
Thank you for this question. So I have to tell you, I myself went through the same crisis of housing in Chelsea. It is expensive, and I had to make a decision to leave Chelsea, and I am honest about that decision. It took me three years. I believe one council even knows I went to look at a vacant land to see if my municipal salary would help us build in Chelsea. So the decisions are difficult to stay in Chelsea for all of us. So what the housing crisis has showed us, that it's not just affordability for low-income in Chelsea. We have a workforce, and we have a middle class that can't stay in Chelsea. We have tons of nonprofits and city employees who cannot afford to live in the city that they are making better. We need to address this crisis. And so I do have a couple of ideas. So I believe we need to pre-qualify our own people, our residents and our staff and our workforce, as to where they fit into the AMI, whether they're 30 percent, 50 percent middle-class workforce, and have some sort of system. Other cities call it lotteries. We've proved we could do a lottery. We did it for the Chelsea Eats program, so that when a small developer comes in, we're not telling them to run their own lottery. We're giving them the names. We have the names. We have residents' names who could be placed into these units, who want to stay in Chelsea. All the low-income affordability, it's, you know, we hear time and time again, and I've been here 20 years, there's nobody in Chelsea qualified, or Chelsea isn't looking. But if we're telling the residents, "Come to us," because they trust us, we want to pre-qualify them. And I have other ideas, like public-private with the Chelsea Housing Authority. Let's make those units better, let's make more units, because they have the property here that we can increase the units that we have. They're very aging, 1950s, 19 late 40s, not just the Innis Project, which we know is a public-private venture. Why not the city? We have affordable housing. Why can't we build our own? So those are some of the ideas that I do have as to the housing crisis.
Hi, Judith Garcia, District Five. What economic development opportunities would you like to pursue in the city of Chelsea?
Okay, so we have, there's different scales of economic development on the, so economic development is so that our residents, our workforce, can be developed to do the jobs that are not just local but regional. And so one part of that is trainings, getting out. We have a huge community full of people who like to work for themselves, who want to create. And so we have started doing the marketplace, my office in the chamber, where people can sell their goods. Actually, we had three city employees who sold out on the first marketplace. And we're having another one October 14th, I think, at Chelsea Square. But economic development is also the type of jobs for Chelsea people. I believe we should be pursuing the energy field. This is where the future is. These are the future jobs. Bravo to the Rivian coming here to teach our youth how to work on electric vehicles, how to service them, how to build them, how to sell them. We need to be able to bring more energy-related jobs here. They're looking to build. They're running out of the product, so maybe this is a location where they wouldn't mind bringing and building those products. We should be, the casino is expanding to the sports entertainment area. Let's build up our office space so that some of these businesses that are working over there across the border can have their offices here. It's a quick little ride through the produce center. Those are, I mean, those are the type of industries that are local, and we should be building up our office space. Boston's putting housing in it. Let's have some of these businesses come here. I am close to some people who are in the biotech field in the city of Cambridge, just because of my private work. So I believe perhaps some training should be here in Chelsea on how to work in the health biotech field, just the regular biotech field, some of the technology fields that are going on, that are locally and regionally.
Thank you. My question to you is, describe your direct experience and level of involvement with the municipal finance, human resources, and collective bargaining.
Municipal finance, every single contract in the city of Chelsea's, and the school department goes by my desk. I review them, I revise them, and I sign every single contract and purchase order. So I'm well aware of how we are spending our money. My job is to enforce that we are spending our money based on appropriations and what the budget states. That has been my role. At one point, I thought I knew everything about municipal finance, and then it turned into the municipal modernization, so I had to rethink the way that we do, and we pay our bills, and we spend. So I have an everyday role. I'm here early just so I can get through some agreements. I make sure we're in compliance with our grants. So I'm heavily involved in the procurement process, whether or not we're complying with those laws, we are ethically complying with those laws, we are not entering into agreements with people who perform wage theft. I am the legal advisor to both the auditor and the city treasurer, which is a lot of legalese around bonding, and whether or not we could move our money into certain accounts and how we do that. So I have a lot of day-to-day experience with municipal finance. Human resources, I have been the go-to person to deal with disciplining of high-ranking staff and the day-to-day ranking staff. I, and I'm going to put that with collective bargaining. I have been to civil service. I've learned about civil service, it's been about 24 years as a municipal attorney. Collective bargaining, I have negotiated every single contract in the city, so I'm well aware of what all our collective bargaining agreements say. I even participate in the enforcement of the collective bargaining agreements on the school side, which are even more than what we have on the city side. I am part of the negotiation team for the city. I am no longer part of the negotiation team for the schools. I did so during transition from BU many years ago. So I'm well aware of all of the labor issues that we currently have, and that we have had in the past.
Thank you, Mr. President. We're halfway done, round two. You're doing great. My question is, can you describe your authentic self at the end of the day when you walk into your house and you take off the dress, so the pantsuit? Who is Cheryl Watson Fisher?
I am someone, so, you know, when I got, when I received this question, I said to myself, wow, my generation, we don't really divulge our true selves. It's just my generation in the workplace. So my true self is not the attorney every day. When I walk home, when I change, my husband says, oh, there goes your uniform. So I am that person, my staff says that I'm a wannabe R&B diva. So I am that person who wants to help people, who is strong in her beliefs, who is adventurous. I travel a lot. That's my true self. I want to know other communities. I have been to a lot of countries. I love the Caribbean, but I'm also Italian-American, so I identify with both those ethnicities. But I also identify as a black woman. So, and I am strong in my beliefs and my values, and authentically, that's who I am. And my friends probably would tell you that in family.
My second question is, how do you plan to respond and support the immigration crisis that is impacting Chelsea? How would you help them for the new Americans coming in?
So we have a lot of, we have a great couple of programs in place in Chelsea, right? So we need to improve upon them and support them. That HAT program is amazing that we have instituted for emergencies, not just for migrants, but also for Chelsea residents. We used to have a refugee office in Chelsea. Unfortunately, we closed it around the last recession, whereby services were in place. When I first started here, citizenship programs were everywhere. Central Latino did it, La Cola Bativa did it, the city did it. So I think we need to begin offering those type of services so that residents and government will understand that these people are here, they want to work, they want to contribute to our community. I want to meet with the schools and see how it has impacted our schools, and I want to support the governor when she says they should have a right to work. They want to work. And so we should be able to give them the right to work. And I think Chelsea as a whole, we should be in front in supporting the governor and say, we want our migrant neighbors now, because they are here to be able to contribute to our community and to their own well-being.
How will you communicate?
How will you communicate?
Pull the mic down.
How will you communicate with and keep the council informed?
So every single counselor communicates differently. So I believe with the council staff, we need to figure out what is the best way for that particular counselor to have information and responses. And I've noticed over the years, yes, an email can be sent and it's a general email. But maybe the communication between my office or the city manager's office and the city council is one-on-one meetings in your district because the counselors see what goes on in their districts. The citywide sees plenty of what goes on throughout the city. So those one-on-one meetings is direct communication as to this is what we need in this district. But the council needs to know what we're doing, needs to know why we're doing what we're doing, not just, oh, by the way, we've started this program. But why did we start this program? What are the resources we're using for this program? So that you have the answers. One idea I always thought of and you used to try to do this is meet with the departments. But really, we need a session where counselors ask the questions that the residents ask the counselors. How do I file a claim? Meet with the law department and get the process, whether I file it in person or on the computer. How do I get, do I need a building permit to put a sign on my building? Some of those things, if the council is fueled with information, less conflict happens, less misinformation is put out there and we all look like we're working as a team. So I do believe that that is the best way to communicate with the city council.
When you think about performing the job of city manager, what are the three responsibilities you would expect to spend most of your time on? And if you think about a pie chart, you know, what percentage of your time would you expect to have consumed by them?
So I narrowed it down to three. So council policy and orders, city initiatives and planning. And the third one would be day-to-day operations and constituent, resident concerns and resident engagement. So council policies and orders, I believe, is about 30% of the job. And I say that because department heads should be responding to those orders. I should be ensuring that you are receiving your responses. I should be reviewing with each department head whether or not your policies are being met and carried out and residents have access and knowledge of what those policies are. As to number two, which is city initiatives and planning, we need to plan. We need to look overall. We need a strategic plan in Chelsea because in a couple of years, we're not going to have the opper funding. The Opportunities Act may not be available to us. So we need to plan and all these concerns that we have about housing and traffic, it's not just about this street and that street. How is it flowing through the city? How is it flowing around the city? So we need to plan and I believe that's a good 45% of my time is to make sure that we are on top of initiatives, we are thinking about the future, we are thinking about how to respond to changes in the, on how we operate. So the daily operations and the resident engagement. I'd say 25% because I trust the department heads in Chelsea. I trust that they should be able to operate their departments according to our policies and according to the law and according to what is expected of them. Resident engagement, they want to talk to the city manager, some of them, they want to come in so that is a good, a bit of time and a chunk of time. And I've done that for years. They've often come to my office to chit-chat with me. So I do believe that is part of the top three priorities. I kind of bunched them together.
So please tell us what your biggest controversy regarding your own self and your, and your past work experience that you were involved with? And would you have done, in retrospect, would you have done something differently?
So I'm going to take this out of the Chelsea realm since I am the city solicitor and there's a lot of privacy issues that I don't wish to discuss. But you know, I, as an attorney, I was in a, I was in a situation as a DCF, I guess it's called DCF now, DSS attorney. My role was to protect children, even though people saw us as people who took children away, but my role was to protect children. And I was in the middle of two minors having a child and how to deal with the media, how to deal with the parents, how to deal with the social workers and who knew what was best for this infant that was recently born and at the same time, two young children who just became parents. So that became a controversy because I wouldn't allow the media anywhere near the courtroom that day or even upstairs to even determine what family was involved. I was very strong in that. And the controversy came down to being DCF doesn't want the public to know this happened and that's not what it was about. It was more about, I was protecting three children at that time. And you know, when I think about it, I probably would not do it differently except for I would explain my actions a little bit more. So as I grow and as I grow, continue to grow and grew as an attorney and now a manager, explanation is key. It's just why I'm doing what I'm doing as opposed to just doing it. And so that's how I deal with controversies now.
Thank you. My second question for you is, how do you approach addressing urban challenges and prioritizing them while at the same time including all stakeholders?
So the city of Chelsea stakeholders, and there are many because I consider residents stakeholders, not just local businesses and nonprofits. We are going through the same urban challenges that the entire region is going through right now. We have housing issues, we have traffic congestion issues, density issues and a very young population that is part of the workforce, who are not ready for the workforce as it is today. So I think we need to prioritize what's best for Chelsea and then look into the region. So our challenges of housing, let's build more housing. That's what we need to do and we need to build it for everybody in Chelsea. Traffic, let's figure out how this flows. I know we are kind of limited, but we need to make sure that we can get through the city. We need to make sure that the buses that are bringing people to work can get them there on time. So we may need to make some changes on the flow of traffic in Chelsea. Workforce development, wow, our stakeholders, nonprofits are trying to step up. We need to make sure that they are stepping up in the right directions for all of Chelsea. So we need to make sure that, because we have a lot of different people in the pie, let's all talk about it so everyone's taking a different piece of the pie, not the same piece of the pie. Because we have the construction industry, we have entrepreneurs, we have the health tech industry. So we have so many different industries, we need to get them ready for so that our youth are able and our elderly or people in my generation can turn around and get a job in a new industry we've never worked in before. It's a multi-generational workforce here and we have to afford the housing that we're in. And some of these other job sectors are paying a lot more than those that we normally tend to make people apply for.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can you give us an example of, you know, how you would deal with a conflict with an employee? So give us an example, how you would deal with a conflict with a city employee?
So this has evolved over time and it has to, my own maturity and being more of a manager than just a city attorney. So for example, I have been in numerous meetings where department heads are upset with each other and perhaps even upset with my decision. I've been afforded a lot in Chelsea to authority to make decisions and I believe sometimes I just sit back. I just sit back and hear what's going on. Sometimes what's going on is what's going on in their private lives. Other times what's going on is the frustration in the department. So I deal with conflict with employees based on their body language, what they're saying to me, how loud they're saying it to me and what has happened. And then I reiterate to them what they said to me because they have to hear what they just said to me. And then I explain why the administration is doing what it's going to do. And perhaps the next time, we will consider another alternative or maybe I recommend the other alternative. So I have been open-minded with conflicts with employees and we have them, we have them a lot.
So can you just clear the action that you would take?
What do you mean?
By listening to them and their body language, at the end of the day, they made a problem, there was a conflict, how did you resolve that? What example you used to resolve it?
So not all conflicts are resolved to the benefit of the employee, but it's explained to the employee why it was resolved a certain way. I think sometime, when employees walk away with an explanation, they understand at least the city's point of view and it de-escalates the situation, the conflict itself. Sometimes you have to make moves that where employees are transferred, disciplined. We do ensure though that there is respect in the room, respect for the employee's point of view, respect for my point of view, respect for the administration.
Time's up.
Thank you.
My second question is, describe your relationship with the state and other municipal officials. Give an example for us.
So I have known our state senator for quite a long time. We grew up in the same city and have worked alongside the senator for a while. I know a few state representatives from, I know one from Winthrop, a few from Cambridge. So I, and one from Everett, we have worked together. My role as the city solicitor has been contact with the state agencies over and over again. They all know who I am. I, municipal officials, what's interesting is that municipal attorneys, we meet during COVID. We had such a great time, we continued it on after COVID because those of us in this area, not just Revere and Everett, but Malden, some of Omedford, we would meet via Zoom or WebEx and discuss the changes to what's going on in our role, never mind just in our city roles and how do we get our council to be responsive to the public. So I've learned a lot from my coworkers, but I've also engaged with numerous state agencies. I have friends and coworkers at Mass DOT, D-Cam, because of this city and how involved we are with the MWRA, with the Silver Line, we have connections. And every agreement, they're like, oh, I'm just going to send it to Cheryl because I've been involved in reviewing our relationships with some of these state agencies.
Thank you. Seeing a room full of our youth, what do you envision for our youth here in Chelsea in the future?
So my vision for the Chelsea youth is that they, that the city empowers them and provides pathways for them to dream and dream big and meet their goals. And I think we do do that. My vision for the youth is that, so my, my quick vision is that we need indoor spaces for them. We need a youth center. We need them to be able to gather now, not just in the summer months, but in the winter months and in the fall. So I so wish we had a teen center where they can go. I recall it was a big tool for when I was growing up, just girls group, boys group, how to cook, how to deal with tolerance of people who are differently. There's so much that can go on within indoor spaces for our youth. So but that's, that's a vision and something that I think as a city we could work on together. But the youth of Chelsea are so lucky here. We have an administration now that has a curriculum to teach them about tolerance, that is giving pathways to other types of careers, not just that law school, medical school career, but vocational careers or technical careers. STEM is key. STEM should be every day and we need to get our young ladies involved in STEM. So that's my vision.
Please describe your approach and experience in dealing with public safety issues.
So public safety issues are twofold. We have fire and police and those are easily to define, but we have public safety issues when a water pipe burst, when there's a fire and what do we do with the staff, when we close down a road. So public safety is all-encompassing. So my role has always been, let's pull the team together. My role has always been as an advisor to all the chiefs, the director of E911 and Public Works, just all the departments involved, inspectional services. So I believe we need more of a team approach. Let's not bring everybody in after the fact. Let's all be there at the beginning. Public safety, I am aware of the collective, how our fire department does what the fire department does because when you discipline employee, you have to figure out what they're supposed to do. I know about excessive force. I'm, thank God, Chelsea has never been in trouble in the 20 years that I have been here on our police department. I am aware that our emergency management department works well with all public safety departments and even the city hall when we have different types of emergencies, where do we place these people? That's public safety. It's public safety when a whole road is flooded, what are we doing? And how are we making it safe, not just for road, for the roadway, but health-wise? So health is also something that I hope we get a HHS director in so that we can start risk assessment on health, public safety issues.
My question, what does diversity, equality and inclusion mean to you and how and why is it important in a city manager's role?
Diversity, equity and inclusion to me means that everybody feels like they belong. It's a belonging and they're welcomed in city hall and they have, everyone has access to all the information, has access to all the services. It's not just about race and ethnicity. It's about access for everyone. It's about tolerance. It's about ensuring that our policies, our practices reach everybody as often and as many as possible. That's what equity and inclusion is about and diversity. It is important for the city manager to ensure, especially since it is a policy of the city council right now, that all of our services, our budget is being equitable to not just our youth but our elderly, which is a vulnerable community in Chelsea right now. The city manager's role is to ensure that. I think, just looking at me, I have brought diversity to city management for 20 years in Chelsea. I have been the only person who identifies as black in senior staff for 20 years. I believe that my ability to raise the issues, and I can give you an example, we were redoing the city seal. I am not indigenous, but I found it so offending, the initial view of the change of the city seal. That is something someone of color or from a different background would have noticed that most likely indigenous people did not wear polo shirts and moccasins back in the 1624 when Chelsea was inhabited. So I just feel like that voice needs to be heard, that voice needs to be loud, just accessibility to our buildings. Wow, I feel that, you know, we need more people with that voice here so that we hear them. So that's what it's about, inclusion, is so that everybody's included in our decision-making and how we, and our processes.
Closing question, you have two to three minutes to tell us why Chelsea and why you?
So Chelsea has given to me the opportunity to grow. I'm not only just a city attorney in Chelsea, a lot of Chelsea residents are my neighbors and my friends. So I'm part of the fabric here. My parents still live here. I still own property in Chelsea. I volunteered in Chelsea. I probably do so more outside of Chelsea because of the role that I've had here and uphold here. Chelsea has been Chelsea has been where I have reached the most accomplishments in my career and in my life. Thank God for 20 years, Chelsea has not been taken over. We have not done major unethical projects. That's who I am. I have integrity. I have treated everybody the same. You don't see me supporting one candidate over another candidate or one program over another program because I think there's space for all of us in Chelsea. I represent both old and new Chelsea. I was raised the same way a lot of people were raised in Chelsea. I've lived here for 15 years, so I was Chelsea and I still am Chelsea. I spend more time in Chelsea than I do my own home. I think that what the councilors have to understand is that reinstituting Chelsea Day has been a blessing for Chelsea, not just our businesses downtown, but our nonprofits and our public. I've started, and I sit on the steering committee for the 400. That's a big deal next year, and I hope the councilors actually join in. And I've done the food truck festival because I believe some of our residents are great cooks and they want to start that and be entrepreneurs. So then we moved it into the marketplace. So, I do a little bit outside of what people think I do for Chelsea. I volunteered to be the licensing director. I volunteered to be school council. And that's because I believe that we need one voice and we need direction and we need stability. So, I was there whenever the city managers or the superintendents needed me to step in the role. I have contacts with parents and students. I protect the city staff and the school staff on a day-to-day basis. I don't believe council is aware of all the things that go on in the city school system, but there's a lot that goes on there. I am the Title IX investigator. I make sure there's no harassment and discrimination going on in our schools. So, I feel like I bring the whole package. That's why me. I feel that Chelsea embraced me and I want to embrace Chelsea and lead it into the future. That's why Chelsea. Because I not only know what goes on in Chelsea today, but I knew what happened 20 years ago and even before that because I do my homework. And I feel that Chelsea needs steering into the future.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Stay here, councilor. Stay here. Stay here. Let her leave. Let her leave. We're gonna be taking a 10-minute break before we get to the last candidate. Ricky. Tess. Can I have the councilors return to their seats? Hello? Can I have the councilors return to their seats? He's coming in. They're bringing him in. They're bringing him in. He was bringing him in. Talking to me? Someone put in a request. He's coming. He's coming.
Yep.
I hope. I hope for the third time. Matt puts the door. Open the door. Welcome to Chelsea.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the city council.
We'll give you two minutes to make an opening statement to the council.
Okay. So much of my, and you'll hear this especially at the end of why Chelsea, and I've always considered the city of Chelsea, and especially over these past six months, that has confirmed that it's the total package as you come here. It is so impressive of everything that you have, the support, the collegial efforts, the people that are engaged. I got involved in public sector for being in a community like this. It's got challenges. It's got success stories. It's got a vision. It's got the commitment of the residents and everything. So, I have had a great career that has spanned across many, many different communities, from waterfront to communities that have lost their identity, to rebuilding communities. And I can bring that experience here and I think in an effective, supportive, open, transparent manner that will complement the city council and the rest of the city. But thank you.
Councilor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is it Duggan or Dugan?
Duggan.
Thank you, Mr. Duggan, for being here today. My name is Malala Vidal. I'm a city councillor at large here in Chelsea. My first question is, please describe how you view the distinction between your day-to-day operational responsibility and the policy set forth in your relationship with the city council.
Thank you. The city council will establish the goals and objectives and the priorities will come out of that. And what happens and what the role of the city manager is to be able to take those priorities and apply those as we move forward through the operations. And the successful relationship with the city council and the city manager is imperative to making sure that that is carried through to the letter. There is, the relationship with the city council is one of respect. It's one of honesty and of one of transparency. That is something that I have always applied to my career with my bosses. I envision my, one of my roles and the position, if so selected, is to be able to make sure that you are never without the necessary information. I will never want you, or I will do the best effort I absolutely can for you to be in the community. You are the ambassadors in so many ways throughout the entire community. I want all of my city councillors to be informed. I don't want you to be out there and saying, gee, I'm not aware of that or anything like that. You will be informed. And I will make every effort to make sure that that relationship is maintained and positive going forward. Yes.
Hi, Mr. Duggan. My name is Ennio Lopez, city council for District Four. My question to you is, can you please describe what you believe to be Chelsea's strengths and weaknesses? And what are the challenges?
Chelsea's strength is the community itself. When I first saw this, I am familiar with the city of Chelsea. Soon after leaving college, I had my first job in Boston. I lived in Chelsea, so I understand. I got the pulse of the city. I have frequented here with friends that are here. But I was even more involved, not involved, but I was more engaged in the city over the past six months since applying for the position in May. And I walked the city. I talked to people. We ate in restaurants. We absolutely, we shopped. I visited a number of different organizations, a number of different businesses. So, the weaknesses, unfortunately, Chelsea's weakness is the lack of affordable housing, in my opinion. I think that's fair to say. But what absolutely carries over into that is the gentrification that leads to that. There are a few things, in thinking optimistically going forward with being in this position, that will keep me awake at night. One of those things is, this is such an attractive community. You have people, you have professionals that, from Boston, that will live here, that will just go over the bridge. And there will be investment opportunities for individuals. The one thing that I do not, that I will work tirelessly for with the council and the local agencies is to stop the gentrification. Because what you do is, because you have investment opportunities here, the individuals want to get the return on their investment. So, what happens is, investments are made, improvements, rents go up. When 50, when, thank you. And it's something that, when you have an investment like that, individuals will want the return on their investment. Now, you'll have displacement because the rents are up. When families are paying 50% of their total household income to keep a roof over their head and the rent goes up, that's a problem. That's a major problem. So, that is a major weakness in which I will absolutely be working very, very hard with everybody on doing.
Good afternoon. My name is Joanna Recupro and I'm the district councillor for District Six. Please describe and give an example how you engage directly with residents throughout the city and how you would treat them.
Okay. Let me start with treating people. I treat people with respect and honesty. I will absolutely be very respectful, no matter the situation. And I understand being in the role of the city manager, even roles that you all hold as city councillors here. There were some emotional conversations that you sometimes are the recipient of. And I have no problem with that because I understand I'm not taking it personal. Everyone will be treated with respect. I will listen and I will try and resolve the issue in the best interest of the city. In regards to engaging, I am not, I'm not one that's gonna sit in the office. I am out. I am engaging. I am attending activities. I am, whether it be weekends, whether it be in the evenings, anything like that. I am a hands-on, out there. I will walk the area, I will walk the streets with the DPW, with police, with fire, anything like that. I will walk along and visit the businesses. I think it's important to get out there and to be seen on a consistent, consistent basis, not just once. When you come here, you do the interruption. But the main thing is to be out there and to be seen and to be accessible. And let people feel welcome in approaching you and knowing that. And what comes from that is a feeling of trust, that I can go there, I can talk to them, and I can, if something needs to be confidential, it's confidential. And so, I'm very engaging across the board on a consistent basis.
Councilor.
Could you describe the process you will follow to set your priorities for your administration?
Really, the priorities are gonna come from understanding from the city council, from you 11 individuals. And my administration would absolutely focus on the operations, on fulfilling those priorities and going forward. And it's something that is important to understand that we are one unit. We are, I'd like to say, I'd like to say, you know, be sentimental, say, you know, we're a family. But in a lot of respects, we are a very, very, we will be a very close-knit group that, taking the priorities established and applying those towards implementing them with all, with city staff and department heads, particularly the administration.
Welcome, Mr. Duggan. My name is Todd Taylor. I'm the district councillor in District One in Prattville. How do you intend to walk the fine line in a community that has divergent and competing interests, listening to everybody, but then it boils down to you making a hard decision? How do you intend to do that?
Making the hard decision is not a difficult one, as long as you follow the rule. But every decision that is made, that I will make, as I have always made in my career, what is in the best interest of the community? And it won't happen overnight, but I will tell you that you may have two different sides for a particular issue, and I make the decision or the recommendation to the city council of supporting one of those sides. Yes, there's gonna be, the other side is not gonna be happy about it. But in my, as I try and communicate, I will always communicate the reason why, the basis of it, of why that. And that's gonna be consistent. So, the next time the decision is made, maybe the decision, so, and that will apply also. Maybe next time, it will go to the other side. But there's no scorecard here. It's always what's in the best decision, what's in the best interest of the city. And what revolves out of that is something that, a feeling of, there has to be trust and understanding of the decisions that are made. Because as long as you're consistent in doing it in the best interest of the city, people will, they may not agree with it, they may not like it, but they will accept it. That's been my experience.
Melinda Vega, District Two City Councillor. My question for you is, what experience have you had working in a diverse community with residents of different backgrounds than your own? And how would you approach city communications?
I started my career in the city of Lowell. As some of you may know, that the city of Lowell was the second-largest influx of Laotian and Cambodians in the country at one point. And that has, that's been a pretty strong presence in the community. The Laotian and Cambodian community did not trust government. They just, because they just came from an environment that the government was the enemy. So, here they are, so they wasn't trusting. It's a matter of, you're engaging. You communicate. You're a person of your word. If something is gonna, if you say you're gonna do something, you do it. And it doesn't happen overnight, but as long as you're consistent in the communications. It is something that, if someone is, no matter the communication barrier, the language barrier, rather, if there is kindness that is being expressed by the government to the residents or anything, that is felt. It doesn't necessarily, you know, the language barrier, the language doesn't necessarily have to be there all the time, but it's recognized, the kindness is recognized. And of course, there will be, there will be individuals that will rise from the community that will support the administration in closing that language gap. Plus, it would also help by, as I expand my lessons with, in Spanish, that I've, I would... would, I'm recently started, which would help, help that, that language barrier.
Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Brown Calvin, District Eight, City Councilor. Thank you for being here with us. Tell us your approach in hiring and evaluating candidates that you may consider for your management positions.
I would involve people within the administration. I would obviously have, have the HR. Identify, making sure that the job descriptions are, are appropriate, are up to date, cover all the aspects in the event that, that the position may have evolved over the years. We want to highlight any, any changes there. We want to make sure that, in, in advertising the position, I want to make sure that if there are necessary job boards, if there are, source anything of any organizations that could, could distribute the, the opportunity or, or post it. We would have a screening committee of people within the administration, and it would be something that the, the resumes would be, would be reviewed. And at that point, come in, and there would be, there would be interviews with the screening committee, and my, and myself would do that. And then it's a matter of looking at the references and, and going, and the references that, that are supplied. And inasmuch as there are 351 cities and towns in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, it's still a very tight-knit community. So you may have individuals that have experience in, in Auburn, or Springfield, or something like that. And because of that tight-knit community, you, you still know people. So you will do your own outreach efforts to be able to ask questions and if, for that, that person's experience with there. And then it's, it's something that potentially it could be a second interview, getting it down to the finalists, and making, making a conditional offer based upon background checks, reference checks, things of that nature. Yes, sir.
Counselor.
Counselor De Jesus, District Three. My question for you is, describe your approach to the supervision of department heads, staff, and ensuring accountability and collaboration to make sure community needs are met.
As, one of the things that I had mentioned, it's key that, to be hands-on. It's not a matter of, it's not a matter of being a micromanager. It's a matter of being hands-on. I would, and my practice has always been having, having regularly standing department head meetings, understanding, because I want everybody to understand what, what's going on in other departments. Because if they're out in the community, and they're asked a question, or if they overhear something, they'll be able to confirm, confirm something, or maybe correct something. So it's good that everyone is on the same page that way. And it's, it's something that, and you, being engaging. As I mentioned earlier, I'm just not going to be here and just sitting down the hall. I'm going to be very, very engaged with, with every, with everybody, in, in a supportive manner. It's not, it's never, it's never going to be in a matter of a, of a, of, of, of micromanagement. It's not going to be in a gotcha situation, anything. It's something that, what can I do to make your job more successful, and you more successful? In order to be able to have that philosophy, you have to be engaging with, with all your department heads. Accountability-wise, I'm a firm believer of, of performance reviews. The city council will give performance reviews of my performance, and I will absolutely give performance reviews for, to the department heads. And I would, I would support the department heads with non-civilian employees having, having performance reports there. And performance reports are not viewed, in my opinion, as an opportunity to, to criticize or to anything like that. It's an opportunity to help them, to help that individual grow. And is there training that you need to, to help you grow in a different position? If your goal is to have a, to expand in another position, if that's your goal, or anybody's goal, then we'll give you the tools to be able to do that. And here it is. And working on those things will help you get there. And that's how I would do it.
Hi. Tenery Garcia, District Seven. Like many cities, Chelsea's facing an urban crisis, particularly housing. What would be your plan to address the housing crisis in Chelsea?
I, I'm going to be completely honest with, I don't have the magic wand. But one thing that I can tell you from what I have witnessed, and what I have, when I've spoken to different agencies, when I've walked the streets, when I have read everything that I could get my hands on regarding Chelsea, it is an amazing, passionate environment here to be able to fill that void. When you're talking about the, the different, the different agencies, it is so impressive. Everyone knows that affordable housing is, is, is such, such a challenge in this community. And that's one of the weaknesses that I had pointed out, was that affordable housing challenge. My role is to be able to be, a role is to, is to step in, and wherever, whatever I can do to help, whatever the administration can do with city services, any, anything, anything to that, to that effect. I mean, and supporting any type of creative development, such as, let's say, the Housing Authority wants to expand into, to a development arm, how can we help support that Housing Authority to do that for affordable rental, rental units?
Judith Garcia, District Five. And my question is that, is as follows. What economic development opportunities would you like to pursue for the city of Chelsea?
It's twofold. First of all, you can't, I think, I think it's a disservice if we don't pay attention to the micro businesses here in this community. They're, they are the foundation. I'll give you an example. And there, at one point, at one point, the city of Lowell was the home to Wang, to Wang Computers. And the, the city, at that time, during that generation, put all the eggs in Wang's basket. So when Wang failed, the city turned around, and all those micro businesses that were there on Main Street, Main Street, were gone. They were not, they weren't paid attention. There was not, there wasn't anything that was, they weren't, what do you need? How can we help? You know, the, you know, programs or anything like that. So they have to be paid attention to. As I did a business visitation program in a community, I went around to every single business, and I would absolutely do the same thing here, over the course. I would, I would knock on the door of every single small business. I'm not going to knock on the door to Market Basket, I'm not going to knock on the door to Walgreens. I mean, they, they know. And then the other main thing that I want to do is the waterfront. I have had extensive waterfront, working waterfront experience, industrial waterfront experience in doing that. There are, just recently with your, you know, DPA, with the DPA Master Plan, with your Harbor Plan, there are, there is a clear direction on where to go. And using my experience and my networking abilities to go out and maybe, and capture some economic development opportunities in there, that's one of the things that I have been very, very strong in throughout my entire career, is, is, is a couple of things, is housing and economic development. And I would like to bring those, those tools here to the city.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Robinson. Describe your direct experience and level of involvement with municipal finance, human resources, and collective bargaining.
Municipal finance. If you can see from my, if, if you, if you see from my resume, there have been significant financial turnarounds in, in a couple of different communities, significant. To a point, in one community, the free cash, I think I increased it 350%, I believe it was, 358%, and which, which brought stability. Now, that is, that's not just putting everything, all, all the eggs in, in, in doing. That's, that's also having a balanced approach in making sure that services were delivered in an efficient manner. CBAs were brought up to date. The, the wage scale for all, for all, for all city and town employees were, were brought up to current-day industry, industry standards. At one, in one community, the Department of Revenue said it was the most amazing turnaround that they saw in one community. So my finance, my, and I will work tirelessly with the CFO, and to help, and, help, guide, support, and anything like that. Human resources really comes being hands-on individual, and being engaged with, with individuals, and any potential conflict that, that may arise within departments amongst, whether it be department heads, whether it be union members or anything like that. I have extensive experience in underst, in understanding what the pitfalls are, what, what our, what the role is, what our limitations are in, in, in moving forward. And then finally, the collective bargaining. I touched upon it earlier about the, bringing the, the wage scale up when I went into a particular community. And this is, and I, and I said to, I say, I said to the unions after I looked at it, and I said, "I will get you in the current-day standards. I'm not going to do it in one contract, I'm not going to, but you have my word, we will get there together." And I did. I absolutely did. And I, and I will do that. So I have had extensive, and that's where the trust factor comes in again, another, another thing, here comes the trust again. And, and it brought everyone up to reclassification for department heads, looking at their responsibilities, and also all the individuals within the unions. They had the ability, people, the people that were at the ceiling adjusted it so they could grow, continue to grow. This has been extensive. Thank you, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Duggan, this is round two, you're halfway there, you're doing amazing. My question is, describe your authentic self. At the end of the day, when you get home and you take off your tie, who's Jimmy Duggan?
Jimmy Duggan? I haven't been called Jimmy Duggan since, geez, since I've been like, I was like 11 in, in Lowell. I like it, yeah, exactly, thank you. I, I will be the biggest, I am the, I, I have passion for what I believe in. And one thing, you, you said it perfectly, Counselor, it's, it's, you know, I have to go home, take my tie off, and look in the mirror. And I have to put my head down to sleep, and I want to make sure that the decision I, the decisions I make, and the effort I put forward for that day were of the best I could absolutely do, in the best interest of this community. My work ethic is, is unparalleled. You will, you will absolutely say, "Go home. Just, just go home, it's time to go home," anything. I am honest, I'm supportive, I'm a very strong communicator, I've got very good leadership skills. And I usually don't say things like this, but I'm in a position where, right, I, yeah. And it's something that I take pride in. I have, I have a strong character and ethical behaviors, and I will always do the right thing. That's, no matter what. It may hurt sometimes, but you always have to do the right thing. And that's me. You're welcome, Counselor.
My second question is, how do you plan to respond and support the immigration crisis that is impacting Chelsea, to these new Americans coming in to the city, and how will you help them?
Okay. First of, first, first, and I'm sure this has already been done, so if, if this just, if this just happened, I would, or what I would, what I would look at is the assessment. You have to sit and you have to assess what, what is the, what is the, the breadth of the situation, what is that going to come, impact the city? So I'd be sitting with, I'd be with the, with the nonprofits, with those very, very strong nonprofits, sitting there at the table, with the school system. And we would have to be able to identify exactly what language is coming in, what resources are available to help, what resources are they going to, are they going to need? Healthcare, housing, as we all know, anything like that. So there is a, within the network, is a, you've got an amazing network here in Chelsea, and it would be to work together to, to do that. Unfortunately, my experience in talking with communities that have reached out to me, the communication between the state and, and the communities with that has not been the best. There has been a lot of, especially in, in Central Mass, and some of the smaller communities, it's basically, okay, there's a hotel, we're putting 85, 85 families in a hotel or anything. Well, we need, then the community is looking for the help, but that's not the case. So the, the state has to be at the table, so there has to be expectations, you know, from the state, or deliverables that they will be tasked to, to maintain, to maintain whatever support that they can do.
How will you communicate with, and keep the council informed?
Communication is, is, again, it's, it's one of my strengths. It is, and there were, there were many, some councilors may turn around and say, "I'm good with a text," others want face-to-face, others want phone calls, emails, anything like that. I will take the direction on however you want to communicate. I will keep everyone informed, as I, as I first said when, when I came in in my opening statement, Counselor. I don't want any of you to be out, out there and, and in the community at an event and have someone say something to you, and you say, "I, I wasn't aware of that." That will not happen. I will do the best I can to that, for that to happen. I will establish boundaries, because I will also be sensitive to your, there will be a balance. I will be, I will be sensitive to your, to your family life. I'm not going to sit here and text you at 10 o'clock at night on a Sunday unless it's an absolute emergency where it has to. So there, there will be boundaries established. And, but you will be well-informed, whether it be regular emails, wrap-ups for the day, you, you name it, you will be, you will get too much information from me.
When you think about performing the job of city manager, what are the three responsibilities you'd expect to spend most of your time on, and what percentage of your time you think they'll consume?
My experience, day-to-day operations takes up almost half of it, so I'm probably looking at, at, at 40%. And with, with, with the day-to-day operations, that's being, from being a hands-on, hands-on manager with, with everybody. The second, the second thing that is probably going to be implementing the policy established by the city council, and working with department heads, community stakeholders on, on, on continuing that, and following that through, through. And so that's going to be 30%. And then there's going to be where it's, where it's 70%. So now, the, the, the balance of the 30% will be community engagement. Again, it's something that, of being out, being in the community, attending things. I'm not shy, and I'm not, I'm, I'm happy to just, just go with, visit people and, and go and, and make myself helpful in any, any way I can. So that's where I see the, the three main priorities going.
Describe the biggest controversy surrounding your past job performance, and in retrospect, would you have done anything differently, and if so, what?
I'm sure everyone here has Googled me. I'm not the, I'm not the wrestler. I'm, that's okay. And I want to, I want to say that, as I mentioned earlier, I have got the most, I've got the utmost character and integrity of, of, of an individual that you will meet, absolutely. And I say that, I, people, mistakes were made by individuals, by staff that I entrusted. And it's something that, checks and balances, we're not adhered to, and it's something, at the end of the day, I will take full responsibility for it. And it's something that, we are talking about the procurement issue, as you all have, have, I'm sure, have, 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 have heard. And it's something that, in going forward, what I have done is I just recently, it's not part of my resume, because it, the class wasn't there, but I just, I just passed, I got the certificate for the first of three phases to become an NCPPO. And I'm enrolled for phase number two, which is going to be in February. And it is something that, I had no reason not to believe that the staff that I was entrusting wasn't doing their job. It was a, it was something, it was an oversight. Department heads were all responsible individually for their, for their own procurement, and it's something that I was working to change. But my struggle in moving, in, in, in helping to change that, that was on the list to change, to bring that professional procurement individual there, so. But I had to deal with putting teachers in the classroom, police on the street, firefighters in the firehouses. That is where, resource offices in the schools, that's where my investment... in the firehouses, that is where, uh, resource offices in the schools, that's where my investment, my investments went. And I was gonna get to, to making sure, making the proper investment there. However, going forward, I would have absolutely, um, been more of a, um, individual to making sure that the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted, every once in a while, just to make sure. That won't, and I assure you, that will never, ever, ever happen again.
Alenda.
Thank you. Um, my second question for you is, how do you approach addressing urban challenges and prioritizing them while at the same time including all stakeholders?
My experience is, you cannot prioritize the urban challenges unless the stakeholders are at the table with you from the very, very beginning. And, um, it's, it's crucial, uh, your local organizations play a crucial, crucial role of understanding what those urban challenges are, and looking at your, you know, your community needs assessment reports, uh, that I have read, it's, um, what those challenges are. And I, I read those, and I'm also talking to the, to the local, to the local organizations, the CDCs, and it's amazing, um, what, what they're doing. All I, all I can do, I don't have, I don't have that magic wand that's gonna be able to say, um, "This is the way you should do it." There are people, there's a passion, there are people behind all of these, uh, these challenges, that people are taking on to, to fix and to help. My role is to be able to, to contribute, to be part of that, and to help in any way I can. And once those priorities are established, then you look at your, with the stakeholders, then you look at, um, the resources available.
Thanks, Mr. President. Um, can you tell us how you would resolve a conflict with an employee, and please give us a description or an example?
Um, I would, um, I would, I would absolutely engage HR to begin with, um, but I, with a conflict with an employee, I, I approach it as a teaching moment. As I mentioned earlier, I'm not looking at making anything personal, I don't take it personal. If someone's mad at me, or if I, disagreement, I, I, I don't do that. It's a, it's a, and I'm, and I take it as a teaching moment, that I'm open-minded, I've got empathy, and I'm listening to, to the, to the issue in which this, what the individual is, is presenting to me. Um, and then I will do the best I can to, uh, to resolve it, and to, but with communication, and helping that individual, um, see why I'm making the decision that I'm making, or the decision I will make. Um, again, leading back to what I said earlier, it's what's in the best interest of, of, of the community. Um, I've got a couple examples, um, one was lateral transfers. There were members of the, of, of a police department in the community that I was in that wanted to do a lateral transfer. There was, it was literally to a point of like, "I make an extra seventy-five cents an hour if I go to this community." I wouldn't authorize it, and as a matter of fact, I put a moratorium on it. And people, and some officers were, were upset that I did that, and I did that because the community could not afford it, and I explained it to the individual. I said, "We, we are down in, there are people in the academy, we are down in numbers, I will lift the moratorium once there is a, there is a level of safety in the community that I feel, that I feel, that I feel good about." Um, another thing was, uh, performance reviews. I had, I, I instilled performance reviews for not only department heads, for all non-civilian individuals. They didn't, they looked at that as an opportunity to criticize and to hurt. I, I completely explained it differently. That's not an opportunity to criticize and hurt, it's an opportunity for you to grow, to, to highlight your strengths, in which you need, you need to be praised for, and rewarded, maybe with a, with your hard work, with, with, with a promotion, when one comes available. That's how I do it.
Time's up.
Yes, sir.
Counselor.
Thank you. Um, my question is, describe your relationships with the state and other municipal leaders, give an example for us.
Okay. Um, as I mentioned earlier, um, I'm sorry for the redundancy, uh, there is, um, even though there's three hundred and fifty-one cities and towns, it seems that we all know each other, and it's something that, uh, we have worked and supported each other for, for various things, that you look at an initiative that someone, that someone did to do a risk assessment of a particular department in, in their community. How did that work out for you? What, what were the pitfalls? And, and so you work together that way. You can pick up that phone, and people are there for you. You have the resources at the, you know, you've got resources at the state, and it came right, every administration that I've had, had experience with, um, it's been, you make a phone call to a secretary or an undersecretary, and they, they absolutely, they'll call you back. Your ex, one of, your ex-city manager was great at returning phone calls, when he was the secretary. He was fantastic, and that came down from the, from, from the governor's office, and that has been, that has been an ongoing thing. So you gain relationships, you build your relationships, you build trust, you build, you build a number of, of positive things that you can just pick up the phone for. Couple of things, um, that, um, when I was in the city of Gloucester, I did a unique power purchase agreement, we took, uh, from wind turbines. The wind turbines, uh, took that power, and they, it fed all the city buildings, and there was actually excess there, that, they don't do it anymore, um, that was sold back to the, was sold back to National Grid, so then National Grid would cut the city a check, and meanwhile, all the energy. So you have that kind of initiative, and you have that kind of a project, now it's a matter of, um, people are reaching out, out, out to me, whereas I may have reached out to them previously on, on, you know, about doing a risk assessment on, on a particular, on a particular department. So there's a tremendous amount of collegial, um, uh, relationships within, within state and local government.
Seeing that we have a room full of youth, what do you envision for our youth here in Chelsea?
Now you got my Achilles' heel. Um, the youth is our future. It's, it's very, very simple. Why wouldn't you invest, why wouldn't you invest what you can in the youth? Not only you're talking about education, education is paramount, but you're also talking about after-school, after-school things, and looking at the different agencies, the Boys and Girls Club, I know that they have an after-school program. I know that you pop on a football program, is no longer, and there's, there's this difficulty within the, I believe there's difficulty with, um, of having, um, players for the little league. Um, being a coach myself for years, at, at girls softball, and, and youth football and everything, I, I absolutely am, am feel that we need to pay attention to our youth and do every single thing we can to nurture them, support them, and guide them in the, in the, in the right way. I didn't do it, and I, I wanna tell you that, I was at the Kiwanis Track and Field Event last, last week, and I volunteered for it, but that wasn't the first time that I've been involved in Kiwanis. I mean, we have, we have given some financial support, but that was the first time. It was amazing to me, it was great to see the kids enjoying and being competitive, but having fun at it, and learning camaraderie, learning teamwork, learning support. I, children are helping each other up that fell down, and it, it was, it was, it was great. I, I can't say enough about, about the youth, about supporting them.
Please describe your approach and experience in dealing with public safety issues.
I've had extensive experience dealing with, with public safety. Now, and I don't, and I don't look at it, and I've never viewed it as, um, I've always viewed it as a, as a working partnership. They're the subject matter experts in, in the public safety, in the public safety world. Uh, and it's something that, but I have, I've been involved in, obviously with the collective bargaining. I have been involved in hiring, hiring new chiefs. Uh, I also have been looked at, um, of being involved in after-action reports. There could be a tragedy within, within, within the community, there has to be an after-action report, and being involved in that, and working with the public safety individuals, and the trauma that those public safety witnessed, and now they need, they need the necessary trauma treatment, uh, to help them, which is, which is paramount. Incident command for weather-related events, when you, when you're in a coastal community, you know, here you have, you know, I mean, some of, some of the events. When I was in Gloucester, it was, um, one of the things that, this is a kid from Lowell, who, Jimmy, from Lowell. Um, and, um, you know, this is a kid from Lowell who turned around and there wasn't an ocean around. We were working with the police to pull people, surfers from, from a typhoon off the, uh, from the ocean. I'm like, "People are surfing in this?" So, um, I was also been involved in changing the cultures of, of, of departments, and making it more, uh, progressive and supportive, and, um, uh, increase the training, and being very supportive that way, so it's been extensive.
Uh, my question, what does diversity, equality, and inclusion mean to you, and how and why is it important in a city management role?
It's, it's paramount in, in, in so many different ways, and one thing that you need to recognize in the, in the role of, we all need to recognize, the diversity is not just has to do with a person's skin color. Diversity also has to do with the sexual preference, and the LGBTQ community, it needs to be, that needs to be recognized also, so you need to be, absolutely, that needs to be sensitive. The equity is, um, the equity is not necessarily everyone being treated the same. There, um, there is a cartoon of, there were three individuals, one tall person, one average height, and one person in a wheelchair, they couldn't, and over the fence. The tall person could see over the fence, the, the, the shorter person could be on his tippy toes and look over. The person on the, the person on the wheelchair could not see over the fence. They were given all three boxes equally. That's not, so, but the, still the person in the wheelchair could not see over. So it's a matter of, uh, then the next caption was, "The fence was gone." And, um, the equity is, how do we give each person the same ability to, to experience the same, to, to experience the same thing? It's not a matter of, it's not a matter of, um, of just, okay, you just give the, the, that box to everybody, and then it's all solved. It's not, it's gonna affect people differently. Inclusion is belonging. Um, the, the, uh, diversity, equity, and inclusion conversation has quickly expanded to belong, to include belonging. So it's gone from DEI to DEIB. And it's not just having someone in the room, it's engaging with them to the point that they belong. It's something that, um, so many times you will, a person may be at the table to check that box, but unless they're engaging with them to making them feel belonged, it, it doesn't do any good. So you, it's imperative that you have to do that, and that's a vital role in the city manager.
There you go. Uh, closing question, you have two to three minutes to tell us, why Chelsea and why you?
Okay. As I, as I mentioned earlier when I came in, um, Chelsea is the total package. It's, 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 it's the, it's the position, it's the city of why I got involved in public management. And I, um, when I came out of undergraduate school, my intent was not to be in public management, my intent was to be in federal law enforcement. But I worked for the city of Lowell while going through the process, and it is something that, um, very, very densely populated areas in the city of Lowell, they had, uh, very distressed properties, properties, triple-deckers that were just abandoned, vacant, they were just fire hazards, drug dens, you name it. And you had beautiful families that, that were right next door on either side of it. And it's something that I will never forget. So we got funding from the state to raise all those dilapidated, bad buildings, and we, we turn around, and I will never forget, and I gave my word, and this is where the government, the relationship with the government, "Oh, sure, you know, you say you're gonna get rid of it, you say you're gonna get rid of it." And this is where my word is, is, is gospel to me, and yep, no, we're gonna get rid of it. The building came down, the people came out of their houses on either side, who lived in fear twenty-four hours a day. Can you imagine that? Living in fear twenty-four hours a day, and came out, and they were just, there was, there were language barriers, absolutely, but this is what I was referring to earlier with, with, when you are, when you are exhibiting support and kindness, you don't need a language, it, it just exhibits, and they were so appreciative of what we were doing, they're appreciative of me. That's where I stood there and said, "I wanna make a difference, I wanna be part of a movement that makes a difference, difference for the quality of life in, 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 in people, in, in a society, in a community." That's why, um, and Chelsea has the passion, you've got the network, the support, I have, I'm in awe of all the different organizations you have here, and the passion and the commitment behind that. It's, it's, and I applaud the city council for one-hundred percent for supporting that also, and, um, and the administrations. Why, why me? Um, there is not a component in this entire city, I do not have directly related experience. CPA, working waterfronts, um, CSO, CSO issues with TPW, uh, there is historic, there's economic development, there's housing, there is, uh, planning, there's zoning, um, operations, there is nothing that I have not had, had, I've been successful in my career, um, that is, uh, within this community. I, I don't have, uh, yeah, there is nothing, absolutely, and my, my mom and dad taught me a long, long time ago, and you, um, and one thing I'm gonna express to Mr. President and the council, um, I want this job. I know I will do a great job for this community, and to a great job, you invest in me, I will invest in you, and I will be here, all the time, twenty-four hours a day, if you know what, if you catch my drift.
Well, thank you, thank you for coming in to, uh, share your background, uh, with this council. And as my colleagues, hold your seats while he has an opportunity to leave.
Okay, thank you very, very much, everybody, thank you. Good luck.
We will take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back for public, public speaking. We will give, uh, public speaking two minutes to speak, address the council. There's a pad, there's some paper over there, uh, stating your name and address for the record, and if you would please sign the form so that we can have it for the official record. First up.
Uh, Carl Allen, I'm the president of Local nine-four-two-seven of United Steel Workers. Uh, we represent fifty-plus middle manage-
What, can you give us your address, please?
Oh, uh, Six Little Point Road, Swambskett. Uh, we represent fifty-plus, uh, middle management professionals in City Hall, and... So I'm not here to comment on any of the individual candidates. Um, I've been working in City Hall for almost seven years now. Um, if our department or any other department had designed the process that you used for this election, you- this election, you would rightly have criticized us for it. And it's unfortunate that the outreach and community involvement was not an integral part of this. Broadly, the new city manager has two missions. One is the operational side, addressing resident concerns. And the second is how to create and build a city where residents who want to remain here can thrive and build a home. This includes residents who are not in the minority that vote and those that have been deliberately disenfranchised by the American political system. I hope you all keep them in mind as you make your decisions. My brothers and sisters in Local 9427 support these missions every day, and we look forward to working with whoever City Council chooses to continue to do that.
Your two minutes, your two minutes are up. I want to give everybody a chance to speak.
Okay.
You, you can come back Monday night to public speaking, we'll be open. We want to get a chance to get to everybody.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Choose wisely.
State your name and address for the record, and please write it down.
I'm Jimmy Algarro. I live at 102 Chestnut Street. I'm in 11th grade. What Chelsea needs is a leader to speak for the people and listen to the people. As one of the many important youth and future of Chelsea, I can assure you, Chelsea programs that help the people and the youth such as youth jobs need as much funding as they can possibly get. The more they get, the more they can help the people. The Chelsea youth are able to build up their career skills while making money to provide for them and their family. The funding they get helped the people. There isn't a reason in the world why funding should be cut short. The more jobs you're able to create for the youth is another youth that is able to make an income for their family and a bright future. Youth jobs get children off the streets to avoid them from doing bad activities. At the end of the day, funding for youth is life-changing. I hope it will come to the understanding and agree. Thank you. And I'll, um, more.
Thank you.
A leader that is willing to make an effort to change rent control would make a difference for Chelsea as a whole. Chelsea is not a rich city. A lot of families work regular jobs. They shouldn't have the fear and worry about getting evicted or paying rent that'll increase, that they won't be able to afford. A family should be able to sleep in their home without worrying about the future of their home. I hope to have a representative for Chelsea that'll take action. I hope, I hope to see changes in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Raul. I live at, uh, 40 Commons Street, Chelsea. I'm Honduran. I'm a Chelsea High School student and my grievances, um, first of all, I want to thank to all the council citizens, the limited opportunity to express my grievances here as a Chelsea student. And, well, uh, what I want to talk about is, um, as a young person, I feel that it's important that the next city manager supports the program to prevent, um, some tobacco, babes, cigarettes, and drugs, especially to middle school, high school students, which are bringing a struggle with that because it's a huge problem and which toll for that help, um, make people to be unemployed and have debts and they are struggling being young adult after they graduate because they have this type of problems, that tobacco, addictive tobacco, babes, cigarettes, drugs, whatever they have. And I think it's, that's why it's very important because they have to be financially independent and have a future for that, wouldn't they? We have, get an addiction. And all of that is starting in schools. So, that's why I want to have a program that prevent, uh, tobacco and all types of cigarettes, babes from middle school and high schools in Chelsea.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Natalie. Um, I'm a student, I go to Chelsea High, and as a youth-
Can you give, can you give us your address, please?
65 4th Street in Chelsea. As a youth that has been living in Chelsea for almost her whole life, I want to make sure that the next city manager has a close relationship with the youth and creates more opportunities for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Joshua, and I live at 9 Sherliffe Street. I know that the city manager has many things to deal with. I don't know if what I'm going to say to you might be, might be, eh, 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 important or not, but for me, eh, eh, it really is. I want to see more support for small businesses. In, in Chelsea, there, there are many of, of us who has, who own a small business. Many of us do not have a, a place to sell or, to sell our products. I have a small business and I have to rely on social media to sell my products. I don't know that many people also rely on social media such as Facebook and, and Instagram. Many of them are afraid of selling their products on, on the street out of fear they will be arrested or something like that. Many, many of us rely on our small business to pay for our necessities, bills, for example. I know there are eh, eh, events where people can sell their products, but I feel like that is not enough because these events not happening as often as we want to. And these events sometimes do not ha, 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 allowed us vendors to sell our, um, our products. This is an important subject to think about, and I would like to see a city manager that supports our path to a small business with dignity and support. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Faith. I live at 76 Harvard Street. I'm 14 years old. I've been a Chelsea resident all my life, and something I want to talk about is education and how we're going to fix the problem about there barely being any teachers for our youth. This is a big problem, especially in high school, for the youth that want to pass their classes, but they can't because we don't have a teacher. Because the substitutes either don't put in enough effort to teach us, or the substitutes either don't have a plan for the class because they simply weren't given one. This makes it difficult for youth to pass the standard requirements to graduate. We deserve a city manager that prioritizes young people and what we need to succeed as students in Chelsea.
Thank you.
Hello, and good afternoon. My name is Steven Collex Bustilo. Uh, I'm 16 years old. I'm Honduran and I'm-
Address, please.
Uh, 149 East Road, and I am part of Chelsea High School. Uh, I like to say, I believe that we need a city manager that can be held accountable for the city's needs and opportunity of the people of Chelsea with the youth in mind. We also need someone to encour, no, to, to encourage among the youth to participate in making, uh, important decisions in our community to improve the growth and well-being of Chelsea. I feel that we need a city manager that can help expand the youth commission, who can be more active in their role, also having a youth center that is inclusive to all and can support what they want to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Alexa Camila Zelaya. I live on 21 Lawrence Street. I am a second-generation immigrant and a first-generation college student at Southern State University, born and raised in Chelsea. I would like to start off by sharing my thoughts on what I personally believe the council should take into consideration before going forward with their vote for city manager. The diversity within the city of Chelsea is remarkable, and I would like to bring attention to the importance of today's youth. The youth are the ones who, believe it or not, are leading the pathway on a lot of the problems occurring today. A lot that, um, that adults are not able to come to a conclusion about. So often, we are the ones who give the voice to our immigrant parents who can't speak English. We give the voice to those who aren't always included or welcomed, and we know how to include others even with a different life experience than us. Doing so, um, this is why whoever you guys, um, vote on this upcoming Monday should be someone who will vouch and support the youth 100%. Doing so would be considering more funding for youth jobs, quality programs, and installing support for enabling, uh, with enabling a youth center. But it shouldn't stop there. Supporting the youth also means supporting and prioritizing housing, education, and healthy food access. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Lauren Sokel. I live at 184 Chestnut Street. I've been a social worker in Chelsea about three years now, and I actually live with two other social workers who live and work in and around the Chelsea area. And I wanted to speak specifically to the issue of housing, uh, very briefly. In my work personally and professionally, I've spoken to a lot of families that seem to be suffering from, if I could boil it down to one thing, a power imbalance. I have spoken to, I can't even count how many families have been too afraid to speak up about rats and roaches and other disgusting housing conditions that they deserve better. Not only that, I, uh, have spoken to many families that haven't been able to stay where they're living because of unbelievable rent increases that have gone up to $1,000 from one month to the next. I don't know about any of you, but if I got a $1,000 rent increase, I would not be able to live in Chelsea anymore. That's ridiculous. And as Carl said, we have a huge population in Chelsea that is not counted, that is not listened to, and sometimes is afraid to even speak up, whether that's about housing conditions or anything else. I want a city manager that understands that dynamic well enough that they don't need to hear those voices. They're going to know what those priorities are, they're going to know what populations have been historically silenced and are still afraid to speak up. That takes a really deep understanding of the issues and the community. So, please consider that.
Thank you.
Nobody's signing. Uh, good evening. Uh, my name is Teresa Cherebika, 21 Prospect Ave., and I want to thank you for all the young people to be here. Usually don't see a lot of people. Anyways, I've been in the city for many, long times. I've been through the mayors, the impeachment of mayor, the city receiver, uh, law, uh, basically court case against city mayors and, and the, uh, charter and the city managers. So, I'm not going to decide, tell you which one you want to pick, but want to give you this premise. When we did the, uh, the charter, uh, the first thing that people wanted is somebody who lives here. So, that's the number one. So, at least get somebody who lives here or has a stake in this city. The other one is the experience. So, that, you know, the city manager experienced for five years, which has not happened, and that's the first thing. And my other third premise is basically, I think some of the young people were saying is, um, have somebody who responds to the city. We've had three city managers. I don't see that, I mean, all they have to please is nine of you on this board to keep their job. They do not, they're not elected by the citizens, they don't have to listen to the citizens. And we've seen that, I've seen that with the receiver, he could do whatever he wanted. And same thing with the city manager. The charter gives them the power to appoint board, uh, the, uh, members of the board who decide what house, you know, what's built next to you, whatever else goes in the city, they decide. And he's the only, that person is the only one who decides and board on, you know, the city council can only say, sorry, we, we don't want it, but that's a decision. So, we need somebody that who can actually have meeting with the people, listen to the citizens, which I haven't seen. So, that was my biggest premise. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Buenas tardes a todos. Mi nombre es Ramon Garcia. I'm Ramon Garcia. I live in 31 Breakwater Drive. Many of you know me as the chief information officer for the city. I am a department head as well as senior staff member. Been working here in the city for 10 years. You have a big challenge today. There's four candidates, very strong of the, all of them, uh, very, a lot of contrast between them. This is an opportunity for you to make history in the city. We are evolving, and there is many opportunities here in the city. You have to pick a candidate that will be involved with the community more. We fail in that sense. I can tell you this, that we have opportunities here in City Hall. And many of you may not know what City Hall means, but it's the casa del pueblo, and we are supposed to listen. It's the houses of the people. And, uh, we are missing that. We have been missing that. I am happy to see the youth be here, expressing themselves. They want to evolve, and we have to listen to them. This is your opportunity, uh, my friends, uh, to make this more transparent, to basically encourage the next city manager to reorganize our executive level department, staff the department better, and make the city manager to engage with the community more and listen to them. One of the things that I have been not seeing here is that every three months, at least a city manager should be sitting down with you, telling you where we are heading, where we are failing, what we are going to do to fix the problems that we have. We have opportunities, and I know that this community wants to evolve in that sense. I mean, we have very smart people. We have young people that are willing to work. We just have to create the programs for them to even hire them after they graduate. Uh, I mean, I will be, even as a taxpayer, I will not be afraid that we create scholarships to send them to very good schools and come back to work for us. Internship programs. I mean, there is many opportunities. Work with the unions, work with the, all the organizations that we have in that sense. So, let's make history. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. So, my name is Matt Frank. I, uh, live at 45 Jones Ave., up in the Prattville section of town. Different people in this room would recognize me with different hats. I'm here strictly as myself and not any of those hats. I want to advocate that the next city manager, no specific names, no specific people, but I do believe they should have some sort of investment in this community moving forward. And on top of that, we need to be thinking about tomorrow. We're coming off of the COVID crisis, which nobody really expected, um, but we were reactionary the whole time. We're now entering a period where we can be proactive, where we can think about things 10 years, 20 years, 30 years from now. Now, a lot of us, you know, I'm 42, 30 years from now, I'll be living in one of the senior buildings. But there's people in this room who will be hitting their prime, and they'll be our age in 30 years. So, when we think about the future, we often think about like, oh, that's something I won't really experience. Even 50 years from now, there's people in this room who might have kids who are going to just be hitting that age. And we really need to desperately need to think about tomorrow because I think the city has spent a lot of the time in the past, stuck in its past. One of my, one of the hats I wear is chairman of the historical commission, so it is funny for me to be up here saying, let's not think about the past all the time. And next year is the 400th anniversary, but we do need to use what we learned from the past and move it into the future. So, that's what I advocate. Look in your hearts, look in your notes, look in your minds, think who sat in front of you, and think who's still going to care about this community 10 years from now, 20 years from now, 30 years from now, and not just five years from now when they move on to their next position. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, hi, I'm Gladys Vega, 116 Clark Avenue. And first I want to say that, um, that in terms of your process, respectfully, it sucked because there was no open community process. Da mali gracia. Tu fuite la única que lo publicaste y nos entramos y por eso estuvimos aquí. So, you know, you were the only one that posted. There, there's so much going on in our city. We have an amazing city, and sincerely, what I want from a city manager is someone that is going to be able to create a pipeline so all these youth will come back after they go to college, or they remain here and be the chief of police, be the fire chief, be everything that they can be because they have the potential. But unless we get a city manager to see that, to see that in them, we won't have a future. We would have a, a- We would have, continue to create a pipeline for jail and that's not what we want. So please, when you're making the decision to hire this individual, think about the faces of these young people. They have a potential. All we need to invest in them, pay attention, listen to their voices. They have a lot to offer. And remember what they also say. They represent their parents. Their parents sometimes don't speak English, they don't know the process, they're afraid of municipal government in their, in their countries that were persecuted by municipal government. So we need to be better than that and we need to make sure that when you're hiring this individual, that it's individual that truly gets that and that it continues to create spaces where our young people can run the city one day. Muchisima gracias. Gracias, Leo. Gracias.
Thank you. Any other speakers? This public speaking will be held over on Monday night. So when people come, uh, to the meeting on Monday, you will be allowed to address the city council. At this time, I recognize Council Haddelberg.
The last item on our agenda is a vote for the city manager. Respectfully, I would motionally move that to Monday's meeting.
Uh, seeing, seeing no objections, so moved. And we will be, seeing no further business before this council, we are adjourned.